Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, May 3rd, 2021, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Smith?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
And Counselor Duran?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, please stand and all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you all very much. We don't have anything tonight under special orders of business, so we will go to committee reports. And we will start off with item 5A, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendation for Appointments for Public Arts Commission and Willamette Water Trail Partnership. City Manager Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, City Council. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on April 8th, 2021 to review applications and interview candidates for several openings. The committee is recommending the following applicants for appointments. Kaiser Public Arts Commission, Kim Steen and Felicia Squires, two positions 3 and 7 respectively. Terms beginning July 1st, 2021, expiring June 30th, 2024. Willamette Water Trail Partnership, Hersch Sangster, position expiring May 2024. Recommendation, it's recommended the City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee-recommended appointments. And with that, if you have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Hearing none, Counsel President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee-recommended appointments. Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the Volunteer Coordinating Committee-recommended appointments. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to the folks who have volunteered for these positions and all of our volunteers in our committees and commissions. We very much appreciate your service. With a report this evening, Mike DeBlossi on Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee.
Should I keep it up or?
I think most people do. Please, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counselors, Staff. I'm here with a report for the Traffic Safety Committee and also we're making a proposal to see if we get support from the council. First is the one major report from the councils or the committee we've been working on, trying to fill sidewalk gaps. And so, one of the things that we've done is had Committee Member Wolf going to the different neighborhood associations and talking to the people who represent those neighborhoods to see if they have any ideas of where they would like to really focus on sidewalk gaps. So it's really the first step in getting a sense of what people want in their individual neighborhoods. And so, in line with that, this isn't exactly sidewalks, but it is pedestrian safety. I believe you all have this little two-pager. The Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association brought this to our attention, although we've known about this too before. Particular intersections that we feel are unsafe, especially because they're high-traffic areas during school years, normal school years. The first being the Cherry Avenue-Manbrin intersection and the second being the Brooks Avenue-Alder Drive intersections. And so, our thought is, in the interim, without having to spend a whole lot of time and money, we could do these pedestrian flags. And I think some of you are familiar with these. But if you're not, you can turn to pages 2 and 3 and you can see, 2 actually. Basically, what it is, is on each side of the intersection, you have these high-visibility flags. And a pedestrian would grab it, cross the street when it's safe, and put it back in its holder. So it's always there available for people on both sides. And the reason I put on pages 3 and 4, we have aerial photos of those intersections and I put the distances between sidewalks. And especially the South and West crosswalk on the Manbrin-Cherry intersection are very, very long. And then on the Alder-Brooks intersection, they're not as long, but still nearly 50 feet from crossing, or sidewalk to sidewalk. So we thought that those two would be good test cases to see how the program would work. I don't think it'd cost more than a few hundred dollars. Of course, that would be something that we'd have to get support from the council and public works, I imagine. So, any questions?
Counsel Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, is there any places that use these? I'm not familiar with anybody who uses pedestrian flags.
Yeah, there are cities around the country that use it.
I mean, around here?
Around here. Off the top of my head, I can't think of one, but I know that they do use them in Oregon. I've seen them in Oregon.
Because it would seem like they'd end up in somebody's bedroom or something.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think in any time when the city puts some money out, especially something that can walk away easily, there is the risk of theft, I suppose. You have to factor that into the cost. People will be people. You can't control that, unfortunately. But absent spending a lot of money on infrastructure change to those intersections, this would be an initial step.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Duran?
I was just going to note that Sisters uses these on the highway. And I've seen them, seen them used, and they look like a pretty good idea for that location with a lot of traffic on the highway crossing.
Thank you.
I'm going to go Mr. Johnson, then I'll go to Counselor Day and Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council could certainly discuss this matter now if you wish. Typically, when things are brought under public testimony, the general recommendation is to see if council wants to make this an agenda item. And then, if council chooses to do so, then staff can prepare a staff report and investigate it further and bring it back to council. If you choose to do so, or you can choose to discuss it tonight, that's up to the council.
Thank you. Counselor Day, you had a question?
Two things. Number one, the pictures here, it's the city of Kirkland, Washington. That's what it says on the bottom there. And the second thing is, if you recall from my last, I know you all were sitting on the edge of your seats at my last, my counselor report at the last city council meeting. These are the intersections that our Traffic Safety Committee identified as potential problems or unsafe or whatever. So, we were waiting for the letter from the Chair and Ms. Davis. And now that we have that, as Mr. Johnson suggested, I think it's probably appropriate for us to at least ask staff to come back with a report, you know, with a, I don't know, a response or a report or something of that nature for the council to consider.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel Reed, you had a question?
I don't need to say it now. I can wait till official discussion.
And certainly, we were under expectation that you were going to make a decision tonight.
Right. And that was a wise, wise conclusion. Counsel Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems like a couple of years ago, we discussed these types of flags. And there was some input from Bill Lawyer, I believe, and also Sergeant La Day. And I would like their input before we move forward on something like this too. Because at the time, they didn't feel they were very necessary.
All right. Thank you. So, I believe the recommendation is to have staff come back to us with their perspective on this as a pedestrian safety measure. And I would also like to add in contacting our Safe Routes to School Coordinator at the Mobile Valley Council of Governments. This is the coordinator for the entire school district, which includes Kaiser. And that is an extremely well-informed and resourceful individual.
And I would just like to find out that the, especially the Brooks-Alder one is near the Claggett and Mettle School. So there are quite a few kids that go from that intersection.
Right. And I think that that would feed into the conversation of making sure that we include the Safe Routes to School Coordinator.
Also, Madam Mayor?
I'd also point out that Jamie Davis is the committee member on the Traffic Safety Committee who's, I guess, whose focus is on the safe routes to schools. So, it works perfect.
Excellent. All right.
Thank you.
Look forward to that. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else here for committee reports that I didn't get a blue slip from? Okay. Seeing none. Then we'll go to public comments. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening, that is for the 7-Eleven store liquor license change of ownership. And with that, I'd like to extend a welcome to Chief McMahon from Marion County Fire District Number 1 to lead us off this evening. And welcome, Chief. And I believe one of your board members, Mr. Walter, is here with you this evening as well. If I recognize the person under the mask. Yes.
You are.
Welcome, Chief.
Welcome. Thank you for having us and extending that time period for us. My name, Madam Mayor, Counselor Staff, my name is Kyle McMahon, Fire Chief, Marion County Fire District Number 1. And then this is Mike Walter, Board President of Fire District 1. Just wanted to take a few moments. It was a little over a year ago, I think, we came and provided a community update for you all. So I have, in the effort of time, I believe you have the entire presentation in your packet. I'm going to focus on a few slides. So, pardon me as I skip through a few. So just a reminder, Marion County Fire District Number 1, we are an independent service district. We're not connected to any of the cities. Marion County Government, State of Oregon, nothing like that. So we are funded by property taxes that are living on the district. We serve the north end of Kaiser up to about Wakanda Road, Brooks area, up to Hal Prairie, halfway to Silverton Highway 22 and the patchwork of Jigsaw Puzzles, that's the I-5 Lancaster corridor. Run about 8,100 calls in 2020. And as of this morning, we are on track for 9,000 calls this year. Our call volume has skyrocketed with the COVID and evidently that nice weather has decided people are going to get out and hurt themselves. So, 55,000 people. We do have the Clear Lake Fire Station, which is Station 6. Traditionally, we've had a lot of volunteer personnel. When I started in 2001, we had over 125 volunteers. And over the years, we're down to 67 of those. 14 of those are our support service volunteers. These are members of the community that were, before Marion County Fire District Number 1, it was Brooks Rural Fire District. And those 14 have almost 500 years of service to the district, which is a dedication to those people. They still come down for drill every, every week. But since last year, we've had a net loss of 10 firefighters. So the volunteer problem just continues to keep going down, which is why we need more career staff. People are busy. They got lots of commitments. If anybody's looking to volunteer, we take firefighters. We have water tender operators or EMS-only volunteers. Kaiser Connection, we've been serving the area since 1941. Then 1968, we merged into Marion County Fire District Number 1. We staff medic 33, which is a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week advanced life support ambulance out of that station, along with Engine 725, which is staffed by volunteers or what we call a swing company, where the medic will take the ambulance or the fire engine, depending on the call. In that Clear Lake area, 528 calls last year for service. And then the Brooks area, another 393. Our Brooks and Clear Lake engines and stations will help cover each other. Generally speaking, we're about north of Park Meadow and we run automatic aid with Kaiser Fire District on a daily basis. Great partnership there. Call volumes have increased over 50% in just the last eight years. And like I said, we're on track for a 10% increase this year with decrease in numbers of volunteers and not much increase in staff. I'm going to slip a few. So last year, we went out for two local option levies in May and November. Both of those were defeated by voters. And this is a kind of a diagram of how we were deployed. If you take the volunteer apparatus out of the picture, this is where we have fire engines or ambulances staffed. Station 1 is four corners that we had last year, an engine and an ambulance. Station 2, Middle Grove, had an ambulance and a battalion chief. Station 6, that Clear Lake Station, had a engine during the day and a 24-hour medic unit, 7:00 to 4:00. So there's a crew of five. And then after hours, they go with the engine or the ambulance. And then Station 8, our Schmeckata Station, had an engine with three personnel. And again, these are just constant staffing apparatus and stations. When we lost our local option levy, which resulted in $2.4 million loss in revenue, we moved our engine from Station 8 at Schmeckata over to Middle Grove. And all three stations became what we call swing companies. Instead of having like five people at a station, we went to three. And they will take the engine or the ambulance. And that happens at all three of those staff stations. With call volume increasing, when they take one piece of apparatus, that means that station doesn't have another piece to be able to go. So if Station 6 in Clear Lake goes on a call, now you're either getting mutual aid from the Kaiser Fire District or you're getting an engine or an ambulance from Middle Grove. That happens across the district, which makes our response times much longer, can up to 11 to 13 minutes. About six to eight hours a day. We have no dedicated resources available, where we're totally relying on volunteers, which they all have jobs. They all work. So the liability to the district and to our citizens is not something that we take lightly. And in this model, you'll notice that there is no dedicated 24/7 engine company to be able to respond if there was a fire. So we run out of resources on a daily basis, especially with the call volume. We're still serving the district, all the stations that we have. We did close the Lebiche Center and the McCray Station. Those had no volunteers for quite some time. But we're running out of resources and it's not safe. So we are back on the May levy. And I'm not looking for support or anything. I'm just sharing information. We don't believe that it's safe to operate without a dedicated engine company. So we are back out on the May 18th ballot for a five-year levy for 59 cents per 100,000, per thousand of assessed value, or $59 per 100,000 of assessed value, to place a dedicated engine company in service, probably at the Middle Grove Fire Station that can reach all corners of the district, reduce those response times, and have an engine company available to fight fires. Not what we had, but it's something to at least reduce that liability to the district and to the citizens we serve. And with that, I would entertain any questions or you have my contact info. Anybody's welcome to call, email. We have information on Facebook of what we do, how we do it. And anybody's welcome to come for a tour. Once COVID restrictions are off, you can come right on an ambulance or a fire truck if we get that. That's, you won't get much sleep, I can guarantee you that, if you come for 24 hours. They're very busy.
Yes, indeed. Well, thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for coming. And Board President Mike Walter, we have a question from Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering if you had any either survey data or any kind of sense of why those levies were not successful in the past? And I guess what's different about this one? And so, yeah, I just, I was curious.
We are still struggling to figure out the true reason. We do know that 56% of our citizens that we recently polled didn't know that we laid off any firefighters or closed two stations. We do mailers, Facebook, we've had multiple articles in the Kaiser Times, Statesman Journal. Not sure if that message just isn't getting out there. A lot of times, fire service, when you call 911, somebody shows up and that's what people care about. So the details, you know, oh, they're just in the city. Or Marion County Fire District Number 1, well, you're with the county. Just get the county commissioners to give you more money. So there's a lot of confusion that we've been facing and we're trying to clean that up. And I think we've done an excellent job. And this levy, we did have the levy at 71 cents per thousand up until last year. This one is 59 cents per thousand, so it is a decrease to pay just for those nine firefighters. Not any rainy day funds, not for apparatus or anything else. It's just for that engine company and at a lower cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief or Mr. Walter? Counselor Day?
I just wanted to make a comment. For a while there, I was a frequent customer of, I live up north of Park Meadow, right by the Clear Lake Station. And I have a, I have a son who has a seizure disorder. And we were frequent customers of the folks there. And they were fantastic. They always took care of us. They showed up so much that they actually knew my kids' names after about three years. But I sincerely appreciate it. I know my family does. And we'll be wholeheartedly supporting this and telling everyone we can to please vote for it, which is amazing that I would actually advocate and support a tax increase. But I think it's well worth it. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
All right. Thank you very much. Other questions for Chief? Thank you so much for coming this evening. And thank you for the service and safety that you provide for our community and for our neighbors in rural Marion County. Really appreciate you both.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Hallier for a quarterly report from the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Counselors, Staff. I'm here today to give you a little update of what we're doing over at the Kaiser Chamber. It's a very active time. If I would have known what I know now, if I would have known a few months ago, I would have said they should have got somebody else. But there is light at the end of the tunnel. We're working our way through and hopefully we'll have a permanent executive director soon. Our doors are open for business. I am amazed at the number of people that we get, walk in a few every day. We are getting calls now from tourists, from people looking for this area, planning, trying to plan on. We're trying to work with our member hotels and motels and trying to figure out how we can accommodate them when the first question everybody asks is, is the pool open? And most of the time, we have to tell them, no, it's not. But there are, we're trying to work with some of the folks, figure out how we can do that. They're doing it over on the coast. We ought to be able to figure out how to do it over here. Our staff continues to operate at about 1.5, a little bit less full-time equivalents. We have a budget for three. We have not hired that because of stability of our members, quite frankly. We've had a good run this last few months in getting new members. We have 20 new members at the chamber. Unfortunately, we lost 20 members at the chamber. 80% of them because affordability. Wasn't because of service. It wasn't because they didn't want to. What we've discovered is businesses have gone through their payroll payments, one and two. They've gone through their equity. They've gone through their savings. They've made their layoffs. And what they're trying to do now is trying to keep the lights on. This is particularly true for our restaurant service industry, food service folks. If you don't know, 50% of our members of Kaiser Chamber that own restaurants are women and minorities. So those businesses are important to this community. They reflect this community and we need to support them. Just to give you an idea of a typical week at the chamber, tomorrow, we have greeters at 8:30 at Green Acres. Out south, we have 11:45, we have the newly-created Back Again Kaiser Network of Women. Thursday, we have the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at 7:30 in the morning. And we're going to ask the mayor to introduce our 2022 Iris Image winner for the Kaiser Fest 2022 at that time. And so, we have a lot of things going on every week. And we have still a very active community, but we are making the adaptations that we need to make. Remind everybody that Kaiser Fest is August 5th through the 8th. We found in November, December, that none of the carnivals were booking and many of them have gone out of business. We know of four that are still operating in the West Coast region. Our particular program is too small for most of them. But I did reach out last week on a suggestion. I sat down and just started going through the entire list and we called one and he said, "Well, we have one date open. We're going to be coming from the shoots. We got to go over to Umatilla." It's the weekend of August 5th through the 8th. So we're in talks with them, trying to get them here. We have a backup plan. We will have a fun center. We will be in the same location as always. And we'll have the same parade and activities and dog parade and runs and all the things that we can do to try to make life normal again by August 5th through the 8th. On the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, that will be televised live through the Kaiser Chamber Facebook Live and also through the Kaiser YouTube channel. And then we'll also provide that digital recording to the Kaiser 23 to be played as they can. We continue our partnering with the Saniam Long-Term Recovery Group. We are involved in the volunteer committee there, as well as building sheds and raising money through Kaiser Rotary Foundation, Kaiser Rotary. We also are in partnership and have weekly contact with the Latino Business Alliance and the Oregon Latino Leadership Network. And our hope is, when we go to make our next hire after the executive director, that it will be preferred a bilingual employee. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel Herrera?
Once again, I just want to thank you for stepping up and taking the helm, if you will. And also, your outreach to the Oregon Latino, although, were you there at the last meeting?
No, because I had a conflict. We had, we had a meeting with the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council.
Oh, that's, you both, you were both there. That's why we both missed. Listen, I just want to thank you because to look out there and see a connection for Kaiser besides myself is really good.
Corey Falardo did attend on my behalf.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I had a question on the meeting that we had regarding the Quest Experience with Warren Franklin.
Thank you very much. I forgot that. Yes, we have signed a contract with the Enhanced Visitor Experience. If you're not familiar with what that is, I know the council is. But it is a technology that will allow us essentially to do quests of discovery, I believe is how they label them. Similar to a cross between a treasure hunt and a geocache and a trip to Disneyland. That's one way of explaining it. So we'll have more on that as we develop those. But we plan on using that extensively during our Kaiser Fest times and if not before.
Well, I'm excited that you and Mr. Franklin were able to work this out. This was a recommendation from Kaiser Points of Interest to, for the City Council to take under consideration. And we arranged a meeting, just for folks who don't know, for the Chamber of Commerce with Mr. Franklin and with McNary High School, since they have the business marketing and arts programs, to see where there could be rational partnerships between all of those. And next thing I know, they've figured it out. That's what happens when you have the right people in the room. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this begins to pan out. I think this landed in the right space.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you reminding me.
So was there an additional budgetary consideration? I know that you already turned in your budget request that's up for tomorrow night. That's up for tomorrow night.
That's up for tomorrow night. All be available tomorrow night. We're asking for the same as we received last year.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions? All right. Thank you. Next up, I have Alexis Smith to talk about COVID. If you would just state your name and your city of residence for the record.
My name is Alexis Smith. I reside in Kaiser. I'm going to have to talk real fast to get this to that five minutes. I have the right to peacefully protest. I have the firm belief that our constitution trumps Governor Brown's mandates. I will be removing my mask shortly. With that, as I continue speaking, anyone who is concerned, I apologize. You can have this council back in a few minutes. I'm aware the city has been coerced into following the mandates set forth by Governor Brown. I ask you to also follow the constitution and allow me my right to a peaceful protest. Realize I am not within distance of concern for the CDC to any of you. Consider, I'm not ill because I don't get to leave my home. I have a child who was eight months old when this started. He screams when I put on my mask. He's gotten a little better. He doesn't like people. He has been told, or rather, shielded from the public to the point that when he sees people, he cries. My nine-year-old used to run one-to-two sports, church groups, scouts. He doesn't do anything that involves me muscling him for more than a few minutes because his health is important. I have worn this mask for the sole purpose of making this community feel safe for the last year. I want you to know, the reality is, we need to be a little uncomfortable. There was a man who went to a council meeting, stripped down to nothing, to make the council uncomfortable and to get the attention. For the benefit of our community, I'm going to go ahead and keep my clothes on. But I am taking this mask off. For those that need the confidence. So I stand here maskless so that you may see my face, see my emotion, and mostly so you can hear me clearly. There are many who cannot wear these masks. There are those who fear their health information shouldn't have to be disclosed if it would even make a difference. Some are victims of abuse that cannot tolerate things covering their mouths, asking them to relive that abuse, to have a moment of their council's time, or purchase groceries. For a rule, an unconstitutional rule, is absolutely a travesty. I know a year later, it seems crazy to just now say something. I was told two weeks to flatten the curve. For a solid year, we have been little frogs swimming in lukewarm water. With this last closure, the stove has been turned up. We need to look now to how we escape the pot before we're too tired to fight. So here I am asking for me, asking for everyone who can't sit in a mask and wait to be called, everyone who knows an email doesn't convey passion and can't just, or can't be here to personally spread their message. I'm here for every small business afraid to come here and ask for help, for everyone who is afraid to be the first to ask and the target that puts on their back. What we have been doing is not enough. The city has been so caught up in stuff. COVID and COVID mandates are the emergency facing this city right now.
Mr. Potite, you're up next, if you would, please. Would you like us to take a moment, though, and wipe things down? Would that make you comfortable?
No, I'm good.
We can do that.
Okay, please. Thank you.
If you would just wait a moment, please. Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, city staff. My name is Matthew Potite. I'm a resident of Kaiser. And I may not have all the solutions to what the person before me just spoke about, but I may have one. So 2020 was a rough year. Many people struggled. There's a lot of issues that are on the table. We don't all agree on, on everything. But I think one thing that we can agree on is that if we can all work towards community, helping small businesses, helping our families and our friends, people around us, we can do just that. So with that said, see how well I can do this? This Friday, May 7th and 8th, is the Salem Kaiser Scav Hunt. So it's a scavenger hunt that my agency is putting in on as part of our grand opening for being here in Kaiser. As of May 5th, we'll be at Dearborn Plaza, right off of River Road. And with that, we would like to host a scavenger hunt. So there's approximately 50 businesses between Salem and Kaiser. Hashtag SKscavhunt2021. You can register at SalemKaiserScavHunt.com. Or if you pull out your cell phones, we can pass this flyer around, and you can scan the little QR code. Makes it very easy. So I'm sure that, I mean, it's late notice that I'm coming here and talking about this. I have been promoting it for the last month. Would love to see our councilors and our city staff out participating in this. It is a way to COVID-friendly, have fun with families. So we are social distancing. We are expecting people to wear masks and respect the businesses, protocols, regulations, rules, things like that. But it's a great way to get out, have some fun, explore Salem and Kaiser, explore local businesses, support those local businesses. Every business that's on board has donated a gift card, a product, a service, something that they, that they offer to the community. In addition to that, many businesses have donated towards a grand prize. And so one lucky winner is going to walk away with $2,000 cash. So.
Shopping money.
Pass this on to Tracy.
If you would give that to Ms. Davis, then she'll be able to make sure that it comes out there as part of the packet and everything, and also make sure that we get the contact information.
Absolutely.
That would be great. And would you, just so our audience can hear, your business is what and is located where? I'm giving you another opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. I love plugging my business. So Farmers Insurance, it's the Potite Insurance Agency. We'll be at 4831 River Road, right across the, the walkway from Acorn Dentistry. So, thank you.
Well, welcome to, as a Kaiser business. And, and the scavenger hunt is on Wednesday?
No, it's Friday and Saturday, this Friday and Saturday, May 7th and 8th. If you register.
Okay.
At 10:00 AM on Friday, the first clue is going to come out.
All right. All right.
I'm not giving any hints.
Any other questions for Mr. Potite? Counselor Herrera.
I just want to thank you for, you're getting a good response on this, I perceive.
An amazing response, yes.
It's been really good, and I really, thank you for putting it out there, your company, or Farmers.
Thank you.
It's a great way to go and help.
We, we had to, last week, we had to start turning away businesses. The first couple of weeks, me and my staff were out really engaging our local businesses. And then phone calls and emails and messages started coming in where people wanted to engage and they wanted to donate. And then, like I said, last week, we had to start turning people away. And we're planning for next year with that. So we're looking to make this an annual event.
Gee, everybody getting together to support businesses in Kaiser and having fun doing it. Awesome. That's what we do. All right. Fantastic. If you would give that to Ms. Davis, that would be great. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, I have Claire Snyder. And again, just your name and your city of residence for the record.
My name is Claire Snyder, and I am a resident of Kaiser, Oregon. Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, and staff of the City of Kaiser. Before I share my personal testimony tonight, I would like to reread a portion of the inclusivity resolution that was passed the last time that I was here. That was the last time that I felt I needed to leave my home to provide testimony to a council that I felt was not serving citizens who look like me. I once again am here to give testimony because I feel that I am in front of a council that does not serve equitably citizens who look like me. Here's the part that I would like to read. Be it further resolved that the City of Kaiser affirms its commitment to ensure that all members of the community are free from acts that are rooted in racism, discrimination, intolerance, bigotry, and hostility. We will strive to inspire and continually pursue a culture of safety and well-being. Those were your words. You yourselves have committed to this resolution, but you have failed to carry out the words you have agreed to. When a former city manager was found to have fired his weapon in a civic building, I was scared. I did not feel safe setting foot in this building with the lack of response. And now I see that there is a higher and more fiery response in terms of another city councillor, Councilor Herrera, that is not being met with equitable and similar treatment. Let me rephrase this section of the resolution I just read to reflect what has actually been done in Kaiser. Be it further demonstrated that the City of Kaiser has affirmed its commitment to protecting its own, regardless of their negligence or what it causes to members of the community. They have continually exposed us to hostility and double standards. The City of Kaiser has further made the city council chambers a place of fear, discomfort, and disrespect for those holding different beliefs from the majority, and have discouraged those people of color who are interested in participating in positions of service. Here is my personal testimony to that end. I help those around me. I work to heal the wounds of white supremacy in my own life and in this community. I have grown more beauty in the City of Kaiser in the last three months than any demonstration of equity that I have shown here, I have seen here. I have only had one council member support any racially-involved or equity-involved protest event or community coordination. This council needs to take a long and hard look at its decisions and ask yourself if you are being driven by your bias in the way that you have treated two different participants of this city council for very different and vastly different issues. You allow other citizens to make citizens like myself, who care about our community enough to put a piece of paper over my face and protect my community, to feel uncomfortable. That is allowed in these halls. You are demonstrating bias, racism, intolerance, bigotry, and allowing those sounds to be heard louder than the voices of the people who are asking you to make this a safe and equitable space. But here is how this will end. I was anxious and afraid to come and testify in front of you. But I will continue to do so until you are able to serve all members of your community and fellow members of your council with dignity, with respect, and with understanding that you have a community that desperately needs your attention so that it can heal from two different pandemics, COVID and racism. My voice and the voice of others might shake when we share our dissent and change the status quo. But you have written a resolution that I am going to hold you to. We recognize that government practices, and these are your words, policies, laws, and regulations have historically included discrimination and disparity against people based on any of those protected classes that were listed in the resolution. I beg of you, do better.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, and thank you for coming tonight. Would you be willing to give Ms. Davis the printed copy of your testimony?
Yes, I would.
I would appreciate that very much. Thank you. And thank you for feeling safe enough to share your feelings with us tonight.
I don't, but I do because of some of the fellow citizens behind me today. I do not feel safe in front of you, and I want you to know that that is the case.
Well, I hope that that will change. But our feelings are our feelings, and to acknowledge them and to respect them is important. And I want to acknowledge and respect that you shared your feelings with us, with me. And I appreciate that. I understand that there are things we will continue to work on, and we will continue to work through as a community. And I, I am looking forward to seeing some next steps for our community as we continue to move through 21 in a, I believe, I hope, together will be a positive way.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for doing that. Counselor Herrera had a question?
On a different note, Claire, thank you for, by the way, always, you're always welcome. Anybody's welcome here to speak their piece, whether we agree with you or not. That's all I feel. But I wanted to thank you for something else. The community garden that you guys spend so much time out there. And, you know, you and RJ and Ashley and all the folks who put all that time in there, don't think it goes unnoticed. To me, you're, my volunteer of the week, or month, or whatever. Those people that go under the radar, it's usually people like us. And I really appreciate you. I really do. That's for me. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Looking for the garden to grow. Thank you very much. Next up, I have Jane Herb, the Stand for Freedom Project.
Can you, can you leave that with Ms. Davis?
Oh, would you be willing to give that to Ms. Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you wanted to follow Alexis. My bad. I didn't see the top. Anyway, Jane?
I usually don't see those.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, and staff. I'm Jane Herb. I am a resident of Kaiser. As the governor continues to issue mandates and lockdowns are forced on Oregonians, hundreds of thousands of people around the state are activated and want to do something, anything, to get out from this, under this governor's unilateral and authoritarian control. The Stand for Freedom Project has the goal of encouraging local municipalities and counties to adopt resolutions and ordinances that proclaim that their county or their city will not enforce any mandates that violate the supremacy clause. This is saying that local cities and counties will not adopt or enforce laws that go against the US or the Oregon Constitution. We're already seeing this type of effort, for example, in Sandy with Mayor Polium, and most recently with Baker City and Mayor Kerry McQuiston. This project has a resolution template that any city can modify to suit their particular needs. We're also working on ordinance templates. I have a copy of the Baker City resolution as well. These are meant to protect our city from the governor's emergency order whims now and in the future. And if I may, I would love to leave those resolution drafts and the Baker City draft with the council, if I, if I may.
You may leave with Ms. Davis.
Okay, thank you. This project also comes alongside cities and counties to support them with input from the community. We have a petition that can be signed, either electronically or on paper, single signers or multiple signers, that lets our elected leaders know the will of the people. So it's easier for cities and counties to adopt these types of resolutions and ordinances if you know that that's what your community wants. I would be so grateful if the amazing city of Kaiser leads in this effort and stands. strong for our freedoms and the rights guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution to every single one of us in this room. We have a website called RestoreOregonNow.org if anybody would like to find out further information or to sign that. Businesses who are struggling could print out copies of the petition and have them in there for people to sign if they come in. So there's all sorts of ways to make our voices heard. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any questions for Ms. Herb? All right, we don't have any questions. If you want to leave information with Ms. Davis, that would be great. Next up, I have Paul Richard Rodriguez. That's how you wrote it on here, so I'll read it as you wrote. And again, just state your name and your city of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Paul Richard Rodriguez, Rich Rodriguez. I live in Kaiser. Don't start the timer yet, please. We just saw a crime here. Where's our police?
Excuse me, sir?
We have no idea if this woman is a super-spreader event going on.
Sir, you may address the council.
Thank you, thank you, for protecting us.
Mr. Rodriguez, would you please address the chair?
I turn now to my prepared minutes.
Thank you.
Presentation here. I'm just, I'm flabbergasted. I'm shaking because we have no idea what happened here biologically. No idea. Thank you. Excuse me. We recently lost a glacier here in Oregon. We talked about that before. Clark Glacier on South Sister. Oregon has about 40 glaciers remaining on Mount Hood, Jefferson, Three Sisters, Broken Top, Mount Thelston, and the Wawalas, and they're all threatened. Some three years ago, we witnessed the devastating wildfires up here in the Columbia River Gorge in southern Oregon. I recall the valley being filled with smoke. Now, last year, last year, Oregon was devastated. The community of Phoenix was thoroughly devastated. Closer to home, Detroit was devastated. We helped Detroit. We helped these people. That's the right thing to do. But it's not enough. I recall being at Mount Angel, barely able to see across the quad. Here in my Kaiser home, things got so bad I left for the coast for fresh air. We cannot escape the truth, people. We are living in a climate crisis. I'll be submitting a draft resolution to the council and for the citizens to consider declaring a climate crisis and how the community and the council can respond to these urgent needs. I look forward to hearing about your support, notably Councillor Reed, who by her nature of working in a school district, is acutely aware of the importance of the climate crisis to our youth. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you very much. If you want to submit that via email to Ms. Davis, please do so.
I'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Mickey Lansing Lures? Did I pronounce that correctly? Oh, thank you. If you just state your name and your city of residence for the record.
My name is Mickey Lansing Lures, Mayor Clark, members of the city council, staff, Chief Teague. It's my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the friends and family of Kerry Coleman. Two months ago, several of us came, and we witnessed your adoption of a resolution that created a dedicated permanent endowment fund in Kerry's name. Kerry was your pure court coordinator for at least 17 years. We want you to know in the last two months, we have raised funds. We expect to raise many, many more. May happens to be Brain Cancer Awareness Month, and we have many different activities planned. Plus, we plan to put things on billboards around the town. I want you to know how appreciative Kerry's family was of the adoption of the resolution. Those of us who attended your meeting left here in tears and thought how wonderful it was for a city council to respond in that way. Mayor, you said things like, "We must do this. It's an investment in our future, and it's an honor to do so." One of the council members reported that Chief Teague had said, "It's not shall we or shall we not. This is a moral imperative for us to continue this particular pure court." So since May is Brain Cancer Awareness Month, we just want you to know again how appreciative we are. We're going to continue working on this fund. And I cannot help but especially thank Tim Woods. I called Tim, I believe it was maybe the first part of February, and I said, "Tim, you know, don't you, that Kerry Coleman has a brain tumor, and she's terminal?" And I think, Tim, you responded, "Well, I'm not sure that I knew that, that she was at that particular stage." And I asked if there was any way that the City of Kaiser could designate a fund that we could contribute to on Kerry's behalf. Within 15 minutes, Tim calls me back and said, "Mickey, I've just talked to our legal department, to other folks, and absolutely, this is something that we can do." And he has been faithful and steadfast through this whole process. So we just want you to know how much we appreciate the work that you do. Thank you. And you too, Chief Teague. You've been great.
Well, thank you so much. It was truly an honor to do this because not only did Kerry believe in our young people, she wanted to help make sure that our young people had the opportunity to learn from their mistakes and not carry them for a lifetime, but to be able to thrive in the future. The whole discussion about equity, school-to-prison pipeline, things like that, pure court is one of those incredible tools that allows us and our young people to be able to grow and mature through their experiences and then come out stronger because of it. And it is a moral imperative, absolutely. And Kerry understood that. I'm so glad we get to carry on her legacy. I'm going to go to Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, just want everyone at home to know that we are accepting donations. If you'd like to mail a check or call the city for a credit card payment, we can do that for you. So far today, we've collected about $10,000, and it's been pretty minimal marketing so far. So it's time to get the word out and really honor Kerry Emory Coleman. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a great legacy. Thank you so much. Take care, all of you. Cindy Swainy for Levy Herrera Lopez.
Hi, Cindy Swainy, Kaiser, reading on behalf of Levy Herrera. Dear Mayor Kathy Clark and City Council members, this letter is being read by a friend since I am unable to attend in person due to ongoing health issues. I'm also unaware of any accommodations provided by the Kaiser City Council to allow me to participate remotely. My name is Levy Herrera. I'm a resident of Salem, graduate of McNary High School, and executive director of Mono a Mono, a community-based organization that's helped more than 100 Kaiser families deal with the pandemic and other crises since March 2020. One of the most common experiences of systematic racism or harassment is for those incidents to be dismissed or trivialized when reported. In reaction to such dismissals, many of us develop a coping or survival response known as "not making a big thing of it." "Why didn't you report your harassment?" is a phrase that many of us have heard in private. To have the only person of color on a governing board experience this on live TV is frankly sad. Let me be clear. I am most definitely not saying anyone on this body is racist. I'm merely saying that what I witnessed is a textbook example of experiences of systematic harassment familiar to so many people of color, LGBTQ plus persons, and others. I normally would not point this out in such a public way because I'm usually the only person of color in the room, and I don't like to start a big thing. However, I think this is an opportunity for learning and growing together. At the last council meeting, Mayor Clark said to Councillor Herrera that he ought to report any threats or incidents of harassment to Shannon. I'm grateful to Mayor Clark for that. I believe the intent was to impress upon anyone that documenting such incidents is key in preventing their escalation from heated words to violence. Last week, on April 27th, a citizen of Kaiser was overheard walking up to Councillor Elizabeth Smith at a public venue sometime between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. The person spoke to Councillor Smith and referred to Councillor Herrera as an F-word rat. I trust that Councillor Smith reported the incident, or at the very least that she told Mayor Clark when the mayor arrived at the venue sometime after the person left. I believe an official from the City of Detroit who was with Councillor Smith overheard this incident as well. At any rate, I submitted an email to Shannon, who I believe is the city attorney following Councillor Clark's guidance. Thank you for your time. You have my email, and I am available for follow-up at your pleasure. Levy Herrera Lopez, Executive Director of Mono a Mono.
Thank you. Thank you for reading that. We did receive a copy of it. So we're going to have to follow up with getting actual names and so forth. And Councillor Smith, did you want to make a comment on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, when I first got here, I just read it as I walked in the door, and it first caught me off guard, and now I know what it was in reference to, and I will be following up. Thank you for bringing it to my attention, and thank him for honestly sending in the email, because as we all know, that's not an acceptable phrase. But there's a little bit more to that, but we'll follow up for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me read it for him.
Thank you. Thank you, President Smith. Next up, I have, um, no name. It just says "Community Building." Is that RJ? Okay, all right. Again, I'm afraid of guessing because we all look... Anyway, just name is your residence for the record, and is it okay if I write your name into the name line here?
Absolutely.
All right, your time.
Madam Mayor, City Councilors and City Staff, my name is Ramiro Navarro Jr., or RJ. I am an active member in the community, and a lot of the events that I put on promote inclusivity and creating a welcoming environment for all. And so one of the events that we did to promote that was the LoRider Show this weekend, so I don't know if you guys, you guys probably didn't hear about it.
No, I didn't.
Awesome. So, yeah, so we had a car show this weekend at the Volcano Stadium. It was a perfect venue for the event, had wide open spaces. People were able to wear their masks. We had two boxes of PPE that we were handing out, making sure that the vendors had masks, sanitizers, making sure everybody involved had masks as well. We had about 300 cars that registered for the event. Classics, man. They were beautiful. And what else did we have out there? We had about 20 vendors. We had to start turning vendors away because we had so many people that wanted to participate in the event. There was everything. There was carnassada. There was al pastor. There was... The latte guy wasn't there, and that was my bad. I dropped the ball on that. But, yeah, they had everything else. It was really awesome. It was an amazing event. And, I mean, it was amazing, not just because it was a community event, but because we were able to be in community with each other. And so that was something that we really loved, and we're going to bring that back every year. So we're going to keep that going, and hopefully we'll schedule another one within the next couple of months, most likely using the volcanoes as a venue again because it was perfect for that. We were able to support businesses, local businesses, in getting the information that they need for a certain relief that they were unaware that they qualified for. But all in all, I mean, it was great. It was a great event for the vendors, great for the community, great for my stomach. It was great all around. But, yeah, so we were... Another event that we got coming up that's going to be welcoming and inclusive to all is on the 22nd, we have a Willamette River cleanup that we're going to be putting together with our partners over at Willamette River Keepers. And we're going to be starting off at Wallace Marine Park to pick up after our houseless neighbors. And then after that, we are going to get in some kayaks and some canoes and float up the river to Kaiser Rapids. And then when we put in at Kaiser Rapids, we're going to get down and do some more cleanup. And hopefully, we're looking to have Chief Teague there and some of the KPD folks helping us tow some of that trash out of there. And we're excited. But I want to welcome, or welcome everybody to the event, and you're more than, more than welcome to join us.
So to help me look up the event, what was the name?
So that event is with Willamette River Keepers.
Okay, Willamette River Keepers.
And we'll be making posters and stuff and posting that in the community groups as well and passing them around to make sure that people get the word out.
All right. Outdoors, sunshine, kayaks, making things better. That sounds like a winning combination, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I really love it because it's, so my, my job is, I work in mental health, and that's really hard right now, working with individuals that are struggling with mental health.
Oh, God, yes.
And so we create events like this. I do this outside of my work, though, to promote that wellness.
Absolutely. I know that during this year and professionally, you must be even more keenly aware than I the impact that the pandemic has had on isolation, anxiety, fear, and so forth, and the mental health stress has been on so many people throughout our state and throughout our nation. And to get people outside in the fresh air and sunshine is absolutely, brings a lot of peace for people. So thank you for organizing that. Look forward to seeing that on Facebook and other venues. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Navarro? Councillor Herrera?
Thanks, RJ. I did see some pictures from the drone, drone pictures. That was, there was a lot of cars there. That was a great, great event. Thank you for staying involved. Appreciate that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
I saw some pictures on Facebook. I'm going, dude, I didn't see that. So, all right. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have Catherine Stone. Talked about the Homeless Alliance.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, council members, and staff. I'm Catherine Stone, a citizen of Kaiser. You mentioned, Mayor Clark, the meeting before last, April 19th, kind of the end of the evening, 11 o'clock, I think. And you mentioned the Homeless Alliance. It sounds like you all have made progress. Thank you for working on that all this time. I think Councilperson Reed worked on one of the committee, as a committee liaison for some of that, but I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions, if I could, and let you elaborate a little bit because there wasn't really a lot of time for that. Is that okay?
What we would do is if you would read the questions, and then if you would email them, that would give me an opportunity to look up any information that you might need.
Sure. Okay. Is it all right if I just ask a few right now?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay, so the Homeless Alliance is made up of 10 agencies, you said, and there's been, no?
Okay, so this is normally not what I do, but the Homeless, I'm going to have to explain the difference.
Sorry.
I was explaining about a grant that was received. The collaborative applicant is the Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. The grant we're talking about is one that was through Oregon Housing and Community Services, and 10 of our member organizations received, were collaborated on 34 projects that were awarded a $5.5 million grant. That is just one of many efforts that are being undertaken by the Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, which is not a funding agency. We are a continuum of care. Marion County, Polk County, City of Kaiser, City of Salem, Monmouth, Independence, also with Union Gospel Mission, United Way, the School District, and other key partners. So I'm sorry for the confusion in how I presented that.
That's all right. Thank you. You just answered a whole bunch of my questions. So I appreciate that.
I try to be efficient.
Just wanted to clarify, and I understand that, I believe you mentioned, I think it's the Old Hill Crest. You said it's going to be turned into a mental health and addiction facility, which sounds wonderful. I was wondering, is that going to be a private facility, or is that county? I know county-state would regulate, but is that a county-state operated facility, or is it going to be a private facility? be a private facility?
Private, it's privately owned, it's a company, it's a nonprofit.
Okay.
That has run other facilities like that in, I believe in California, and they purchased that property here in order to be able to provide those services and they'll have partnerships with service providers in this area.
That's not Hazelton by any chance, is it?
I don't remember.
That's okay, that's alright. One other thing, I was wondering, I know there'd be a lot of work involved, I just wondered, is there a plan or strategy in place currently to use the grant allocated for 6,000 homeless, I believe you said 6,000 homeless? So there is a plan in place? Excellent.
Yeah.
At some point, maybe you could update us regarding that when there's time.
So a synopsis of the grant, that particular grant is available. I gave it to Ms. Davis to post with our post meeting packet, so it's there. And also, if you go to the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, Google that and go to the website, it talks about that grant application as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Alright. Normally I don't do that, but hey, if I get a chance to talk about the work that we as a community are doing about the homeless, our homeless neighbors.
There's some solutions and there's progress and there's success, so let's see if we can talk about that stuff too.
That's, that's what I love, that's what gets me up in the morning and keeping this work going is the progress that our community is making to serve some of the most vulnerable people in our community. So thank you for letting me have that leeway.
Thank you.
And then please feel free to email me with any additional questions on that and I would encourage people to go to the website. With that, Debra Kennedy signed up to testify. And again, just your name and your city residence for the record.
My name is Debra Kennedy and I've lived in Kaiser since 1990. I still live here. For those of you who were here in the 90s, you probably remember "The Reign of Terror" by Chuck Stahl, Police Chief Chuck Stahl, who did his saturation patrols and he made fun of the black person working in his office and he made fun of, I mean, it was incredible. He was incre, he was really bad. So people in Kaiser, at least I would, like to see something done about that. You know, and to do that, you have to be willing to listen to people who say they're feeling discriminated against. You know, just getting your back up and saying that, um, you don't like whites, you don't want white supremacy in a letter of inclusion, that, that closes people off and it stops conversation and it doesn't get people anywhere. What I'm here to talk about just in five minutes, I've got five, woo, I've got four. It's my understanding that the counselors, all the counselors here and the mayor, you're elected at large, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then it's my understanding that Mr. Epley was an employee because he was the city manager and he probably served at the, he served at, for you, right? I mean, he served at the council's, what's the word I'm looking for?
At the will of the council.
There you go, at the will of the council. And that's true, right?
Yes, ma'am, under contract.
Okay.
It was a contractual agreement.
Alright, well then, and then Mr. Herrera is not an employee, he is a city counselor, is that right? And you guys are peers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Lots of zeros. Sorry, it's her, it's her time. We wanted, we don't want to take her time.
Okay, and then I had another problem with the due process argument that was being raised. Due process, and I used it a lot when I worked as a union rep here in town, was notice and opportunity to be heard. It's real simple, it's a procedural matter. You have to gather up all the paperwork and everything, your interviews and everything, and give it to the employee who's being considered for discipline. And then they get an opportunity to be heard, they get an opportunity to refute what you've given them. And that's an important concept, it really is an important concept, but that concept should have gone to Epley. You know, you got, if you wanted to, you should have, if you wanted to give him due process, you should have provided him with all the evidence you had, including his incident report, and you know, let him have an opportunity to be heard. I could not see anywhere where due process was violated for Epley. I mean, unless you failed to give him the stuff you gathered, he, he didn't, um, you know, he doesn't, he's the one with the due process rights and you are the ones who put everything together to give to him so he can come in and be heard. I don't know if a hearing was held for him or whatever, but, um, that's, that's a real concern for me because if Mr. Herrera is being charged with violations of Epley's due process, I do not see where that came from.
I would agree and that is not what's on the agenda this evening, for violating Mr. Epley's due process.
I'm sorry?
That is not what is, the statement of concern is about. The due process is a completely separate issue.
Oh, okay, well, in the paper it says due process and that I did not understand.
Yeah, the, the information is in the packet.
Well, I mean, you know, the way I read it when I'm reading the newspaper and I hear that the incident report was a problem, you know, Epley wrote it and he's, and he did sound like kind of not very smart because he said he wasn't sure he was in his car, he wasn't sure he was in the office, but he came in with a loaded gun. Isn't that, if he fired a gun, isn't that a crime?
Ma'am, go ahead, address here, thank you.
What?
If you would address your questions to the chair, please.
Oh, well, I believe it's a crime. I've talked to a number of people who own guns and they say it's a crime to shoot a gun in city limits, much less City Hall. You know, so for me, the problem here is Epley, it's not Herrera. You know, you guys are just mad at him.
Alright, so I will state for the record, these are two separate issues. As far as the information regarding the city manager, it was investigated by the Oregon State Police, reviewed by the district attorney and no crime was, they concluded no crime was committed. So that is completely separate and we will be addressing some of that. And the issue regarding the council rules and procedures and so forth regarding Councilor Herrera, that's in the packet and we'll be addressing that later this evening, so I won't be commenting on that this time.
Oh, this is someone else's packet, your packet?
This is the council packet, that is available online and it's visible to everybody in the community, so you can read what we read. So we post the entire thing, so every, every person can get a copy of it and can read what exactly is being, what we get as well.
Okay.
So I would encourage you to look at the packets over the last several meetings and get the information because it sounds like you take time to do the research.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. No further questions. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council this evening? I have no one else signed up. Alright, for the record, we have some written comment that had been submitted from Carol Dorfler, citizen of Kaiser, subject Ross Day, from Levy Herrera, citizen of Salem. It was the letter that was written, but it was also turned in. And then from Davis Dyer, resident of Kaiser and subject is emergency declaration. And that's all I've got. So with that, then let's go on to our public hearing. This evening, we have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing for the 7-Eleven store liquor license change of ownership. City Manager Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, City Council, on April 7th, 2021, the city received an application for a change of ownership for the liquor license at 7-Eleven store located 4380 River Road North, Kaiser, Oregon. The application is for off-premise sales license. As required by Kaiser ordinance, the Kaiser Police Department has reviewed the application and has no reason to recommend denial. In addition, the Kaiser Planning Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and has no additional comment on the application. Notice of the public hearing for the change of ownership for the 7-Eleven store was mailed to property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. Notice was also published in Kaiser Times, however, due to staff error, the notice did not provide the required 14 days' comment period. In order to allow this time, staff is requesting a continuance of the hearing. It is recommended the public hearing be open to allow testimony from the applicant or interested individuals. Upon completion of the testimony, it is recommended the public hearing be continued to the city council meeting on Monday, May 17th. Monday, May 17th, 2021. And with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions on the staff report? Alright, let me get to that agenda item here. Okay, so the recommendation is continue this to May 17th?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Is there anybody who wants to testify to this this evening? I do not have anybody signed up. So it is recommended that we continue this public hearing until our regular session on May 17th, 2021. So it is continued. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. Item 8A, possible city council investigation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This matter was before the council, the last meeting, last regular meeting, excuse me, and the council approved a motion to prepare a memorandum of corrective action to be brought to the May 3 meeting. And following that motion, Mayor Clark assigned the Council President Smith and Councilor Duran to prepare that memorandum. So we've had some material attached and I'll turn it back over to Madam Mayor or Council President Smith on that.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the record, some of the material that was included under this agenda item were not items that I submitted, but they were from written comments that people had submitted separately, so that normally would be, have been, let me try that again. Normally, they would have been included in public written comment. And so I just want to clarify there. With that, Council President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are actually requesting to move this to the next meeting.
Alright, so you and Councilor Duran are asking to move this to the next meeting? Alright, is there any objection to continuing this to the next meeting? Alright, Councilor Johnson, the council has not indicated any objection to continuing this to the next meeting.
So noted.
Alright, thank you. That takes us to item 8B, Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association Annual Report. Is there someone here from the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association to give the No? Okay, um, City Manager Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, with no one here to represent the Neighborhood Association, I would recommend that we move this to the next meeting as well.
Alright, we will then continue to move this to the May 17th meeting. Do we have a current contact person with the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, Ms. Davis?
Yes, the chair is Ken Girloff, so contact with him, I'm not sure, I did not hear from him.
And will this affect the budget allocation coming up this week? I guess we will finalize that in June if the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association is able to renew, correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. We'll be able to do a catch-up in June if we need to.
Okay. Because right now, I think it's in the recommended budget that all three Neighborhood Associations be fully funded and that will be something we discuss, of course, during budget process, but...
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Alright, item 8C, resolution authorizing City Manager Pro Tem to offer temporary employment to Sergeant David Lade. City Manager Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm gonna take off my City Manager Pro Tem and put on my Finance Director hat. I do apologize, this is coming back again. In general, employment decisions are part of the city manager's responsibilities and would normally not require the city council to take any type of action. However, the city charter does state that the City Manager Pro Tem may appoint or remove employees only with city council approval. So unfortunately, here I am. Back in February, this process had begun, we were, bear with me, I'm struggling with some side effects from some vaccine shots, so I'm a little, little foggy headed, so again, bear with me.
Hmm, bad timing.
It was a really long weekend for some reason.
Yeah.
A lot of cold sweats and stuff, but enough with that. Anyway, this process started back in February and unfortunately with the city manager's resignation, this offer kind of got hung up. Putting on my Finance Director hat, Senate Bill 1049 became effective July 11th, 2019. That bill was a comprehensive bill to try to address some of the PERS rate increases that we're seeing. As you can see in the staff report, we're seeing some very significant increases in our PERS contribution rates that will take effect July 1st, 2021. Those have some really significant impacts on our city financial budget. Me as the Finance Director, unfortunately, the PERS rates is one of the things that does keep me up at night. Every two years, it's a very significant impact for us. This year, as we talk about the budget deliberations tomorrow and Thursday, just the rate increase alone is gonna cost the city well over $400,000. The police impacted that is about $207,000. So when we start talking about what does a police officer cost, the PERS rate increase alone is gonna take about one and a half police officers away from us. That's an impact that we've experienced every two years as the PERS rates continue to go up. This legislation was designed to try to address some of those issues by providing cities a way to somewhat deal with the impact of those PERS rates. The primary thing that it's trying to do is encourage people who are close to retirement to retire early, have them lock in their benefits at a rate that's a little bit lower than what they would have if they continue to work for their entire working career. The Senate bill provides an opportunity for those who do retire early to come back and work full-time. Historically, they've been limited to part-time employment at best, either 600 hours or 1,040 hours, depending on which tier, which PERS tier they, they are. So the, the Senate bill also provides the opportunity that if we do retain people who have retired and want to return, come back to work, we're no longer required to pay approximately 6% of their salary, which is commonly referred to the employee pickup. So right there, the city is gonna be saving 6% off of the top if we continue to hire the same person that we had the day before. That's, given the demographics of the city's workforce, there's approximately 15 employees that would fall into this, retired and potentially come back to work for us. If all of them were to retire July 1st and work with us till December 31st, 2024, the city could possibly save up to $200,000 just by not having to pay that 6%. That is probably an aggressive number, assuming everyone is willing to do this, which is probably not the case. In addition, the city has an unfunded liability with, with the PERS organization of over $11 million. What that means is if the city were to stop providing PERS-related benefits, we would owe the PERS system that much money to catch up, to make sure that there's enough assets in the system to provide for the retirements of people who've already earned those, those benefits. The Senate Bill 1049 allows us, as the city, instead of making employer contributions on behalf of those that have retired, it gives us the opportunity to take those contributions, apply those against our unfunded liability. So that reduces ultimately the rates that the city will see into the future. Again, if all 15 people were retired July 1st, 2021, worked till December 31st, 2024, the city would have over $700,000 that we could reduce that unfunded liability with. city would have over $700,000 that we could reduce that unfunded liability with. Going to a more specific, related to Sergeant Lade, he is one of the first employees that have indicated that they're interested in doing something like this, interested in retiring and coming back to work for us. From a city Finance Director standpoint, this makes a lot of sense financially for us. There's a lot of opportunity to get out of the 6% employee pickup and also start applying some funds to the unfunded liability. Those are the primary reasons as the Finance Director that I want us to consider this opportunity. And again, I apologize that in the normal course of business, this type of decision wouldn't necessarily come to this group, but because I am the City Manager Pro Tem at the time, not the regular city manager, I do need to get your consent to offer this type of agreement to Sergeant Lade. So with that, if there's any questions?
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Johnson first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my apologies to Council and to Tim. I noticed this last week. A preliminary matter, because that was at the very last meeting, you should procedurally pass a motion for reconsideration, because if it's at the very next meeting and you're looking at reviewing the exact thing, a motion for... And we haven't had one in years, so I kind of had forgotten about it. So anybody who voted in the majority, who voted no, in other words, Council President Smith, I believe, voted no, you can make that motion, and that's a preliminary matter. That motion should be made and passed before you enter into discussion on the item. So, and my apologies for not thinking about that sooner.
So I have a procedural question, however.
Madam Mayor?
Hang on, just if I may, Counselor Day. So is this the exact same resolution that was in our last packet?
Yes.
If we do not want to pass the exact same resolution, do we need to do a motion to reconsider? Or take this one, and if we amend it, would it be the same, or do we have to do it the other way?
Well, if you're reconsidering the same matter, it's a reconsideration. It's under Rule 11.6 in council procedures. So my suggestion is, I mean, it doesn't commit you to any course of action. The issue is whether or not you want to reconsider it or not. So I'm just suggesting that under the council rules, that's the appropriate first motion, and then you can discuss the matter after that.
So is it a requirement, or I'm just, I'm a little confused, but...
Well, it's similar to this.
This has a very different context in terms of this is being considered as a cost savings measure, as a very different... It's got to give a different context. That's my...
Right.
That's my pushback on it.
I understand that there's more explanation in the staff report. The staff report is different from last time. That's true. That's true. It is the same matter, though, so I don't, I don't, I mean, the general idea behind the rule is that if you had a motion previously and you're considering that the very next meeting, it really shouldn't be discussed unless you pass a motion for reconsideration first.
Do that, and then we can amend it.
Yes.
If we choose to.
Correct.
Counselor Day, you had a question?
Well, I was going to make a point of order, and that is that what happened at the last council meeting is a motion was made and it failed. And the motion was to approve the resolution as it was presented to us by staff, and it failed. Our instruction to staff was not to bring back the exact same resolution the next week, the next meeting, which is what they've done. Our instruction was, we want to know, is this going to set a precedent? We had some questions for the chief about the utility of Sergeant Lade. It wasn't to bring back this exact same resolution. I disagree with Council. I understand what he's saying, but we can bring this up at any time. We can talk about this issue as a general policy matter at any time. I agree, if we want to bring back this resolution, which has already failed once, we need to make a motion for reconsideration. But to talk about the broader issue, which is what we just heard from Mr. Wood, about whether this is a good policy for us to set with respect to PERS and our employees and so on and so forth, I disagree. I think we can go ahead and talk about it. I don't know why we would need to reconsider whether or not we can actually talk about this policy issue.
And that's where I'm getting a little bit hung up myself. I'm not a parliamentarian. I'm a practicalitarian. Because it's a somewhat different policy decision.
Right.
So I understand that the moat, that the resolution itself is identical. So given that, and it's going to, we have, if we're going to actually offer it to anybody, I understand that we have to go ahead and do this resolution specific to that, but I think we can also have a conversation about what to amend. That brings in the larger policy question, which I believe is what has just been explained to us in the staff report, and that I would like to be able to add to this if it is appropriate there or do it separately. One or the other, I really don't care. But in order to move with this one in particular, we're going to do reconsideration. The question to Council is, do we want to take care of the broader policy question first and then reconsider this offer specifically? Because that's where I'm going with this. Counselor Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the resolution itself, so I brought this up at the last meeting. On page 240 of our council packet from the April 19, 2021 meeting, said that Sergeant Lade's hourly rate would be $50.16 an hour.
Oh, that's right.
The resolution says we're going to present him this, and it says, it still says $51.16 an hour. Again, I realize it's a dollar an hour, and it's probably, you know, I worked it out in my mind, but this, what it would cost us over the life of four years, but the fact is the resolution itself isn't ready to be approved because we don't have the right hourly rate in. So this is, I don't know.
So we'd have to amend to make a correction in the resolution. Mr. Wood?
Oh, it's not in the resolution, it's in the letter.
I see it, yeah.
The offer letter.
Mr. Wood, do you want to address that?
Yes, I'd like to address that. In actuality, both numbers were correct last go-around. So the 5116 that you're actually seeing in the offer letter, that is the correct amount of what Sergeant Lade is making today. The other amount, the 5016 that you saw in the exhibit, that will actually be the amount that he'll be earning effective July 1, 2021. That is including the cost of living adjustment. That does round up to 5216, which is in the analysis as well when you add in the additional incentive for the motor officer.
Why doesn't it say 5216? If that's what he's going to be making an hour?
Now I'm really confused.
I'm really confused. This doesn't make any sense to me.
So the base rate is 5016, but there should also be a line in there for incentive of $2?
Yeah.
Okay, but it doesn't say that in the letter.
It says 51.
The letter says 5116. So now we're promising to pay him 52.
That's today, not July 1.
Hold on. So in the letter, we're promising to pay him 5116, but we're budgeting 5216.
That would be correct, yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that seems like a funny way to fly a boat. I mean, just...
Okay, so let's, this is what we're going to do. We're going to go ahead and do a motion to reconsider, and then we will proceed with taking the proper steps, if the council so chooses, in the different things that need to happen here, because I'm hearing at least three things we need to deal with. So Council President Smith, would you make a motion to reconsider? Nope?
Nope.
Okay.
I move to reconsider. Do I need to specify?
You can't.
You can't. You're on the, not on the winning side.
Okay.
So the ones who are eligible to make that motion for reconsideration are myself, Council President Smith, Counselor Duran, and Counselor Day. Am I correct?
Duran, Smith, Corcoran, Day.
Yep. So of the four of us to make a motion to reconsider, so I'm getting a no here, a no here, a no here, and a no here. So I think we want to start fresh. And what I'd like to do is proceed with a conversation first about the policy and then get into the specifics of the offer letter itself. The policy that I'm hearing here is, A, it wouldn't have come to us, and B, this was available to us in 2019, which took us so long to get here, because this could have saved us money since December 2019. So thank you for bringing it to us now. And this will, according to the precedent being set, and if we direct going forward, that this be available to all eligible personnel that want to retire fully by the end of 2024, that they could do so early and be able to hire back, save the city the money going forward. Is that correct? Do I understand the staff report correctly on that?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Is it appropriate for the city council to direct that this be made available to all personnel as a budgetary matter?
I believe it is, yes, Madam Mayor.
So at this point, we could set the policy precedent going forward, and then we could talk about the specifics of the first person who is interested in that, which is Sergeant Lade.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
All right. Council President Smith, do you want me to make the motion, or do you want to? All right. So I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a policy to allow all eligible Kaiser employees who wish to retire early and allow the city the benefit of the PERS... What is it? I wish I'd written this down in advance. What's it called?
SB something or other?
Yeah. What's the bill number?
The provisions under SB 1049.
Provisions under, and it was Senate Bill 1049?
Mm-hmm.
That's, be allowed to do so. I think I got that. Tracy, can you? You're so good.
Read back what you just said.
All right.
Move that the council adopt the policy to allow all eligible Kaiser employees who wish to retire early and allow the city the benefit of PERS provision of Senate Bill 1049 to be allowed to do so.
Okay. Now, before I go for a second, do we need to put the same sunset on that the Senate Bill has? Mr. Johnson?
Only, only if you want to sunset it. I mean, the sunset's in that bill, so that would take care of it.
Okay. I think for clarity's sake, with the sunset of December 31, 2024. Okay. So I need a second.
I second that.
Seconded by Council President Smith. Counselor Reed.
Well, syntactically, there was a lot of alouds in there, and I think we just need to make it absolutely clear what it is that we are allowing, because I did hear three different allows, and just wanted to make sure that those were all parallel in pointing to the same thing, clearly.
Thank you for that, and that's what happens when I don't write it down in advance. But the intent being that this is an opportunity for all city employees, so it's based on if they're planning to retire fully by the end of 2024, go ahead and do so now. They can hire back, and then we get the opportunity to have the budgetary savings, both immediately and then over the life of the PERS, what do you call that? The obligation?
Unfunded.
PERS liability. Thank you. So as a general policy matter. Comments? Questions? What the heck am I doing? Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that effectively saves the city 6% on each of these employees that determine that this is a provision they'd like to exercise.
That is why I understand from the staff report, plus the additional $700,000 savings in the unfunded liability, is it unfunded liability or just liability?
The unfunded liability.
Unfunded liability. And that's real money. Counselor President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you do bring one back, I would like also align item consideration for the overtime and maybe an analysis of that overtime, because we can save all the money in the world, but if someone's working a ton of overtime, that's not going to probably be the same math. So if you could add that in to the report, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Counselor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to hear Chief Teague chime in on this.
Well, what I would do is, I'm keen on the retirement in 2024. There's a bill that did not make it out of committee that took the sunset off of Senate Bill 1049, and I think that defeats the purpose of Senate Bill 1049, which is to try to get Tier 1 and Tier 2 employees off of the payroll and reduce PERS costs. So I agree, I would keep that notion in the motion. I would simply say to encourage employees to retire under Senate Bill 1049 with a sunset of December 31, 2024. As far as overtime costs and such, those are already baked into our budget, and those overtime costs are also impacted by any expenditures for an employee under Senate Bill 1049.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? What I, and when we asked Mr. Wood to come back to us with the numbers on the benefit to the city by offering this to all eligible employees, this has been very encouraging to see what this can do budgetarily, and I also like the fact that it addresses an issue that we brought up, and that was employee equity. So this is available to all employees, be able to go ahead and do this, and it sounds like a win-win to me. All right. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Herrera.
I just like the idea that we keep our guys, you know, the guys we know and that know this. I just like seeing, you know, there's something about that that I like, having our same guys and saving money, so thank you very much.
I mean, eventually, people are going to retire, but if we can kind of spread it out, that whole, the hiring and training, more, you know, you have the on-ramp, off-ramp, but if you get some of that synergy going, where people can share their experiences, the additional field training, and I'm thinking police, but also public works, finance staff, we have a lot of incredibly experienced people, and when they have a chance to share the knowledge, I think we're in a winning situation. And I'm also gratified to know that people who've worked here for a long time like to work here.
Also, Madam Mayor?
Counselor Herrera.
And also, Madam, the other untangibles, like these guys are coaches here, they're community members, they're, they put on stuff, and they're not only police officers, they're big-time community people, and I like to run across them all the time. I just like them having a round again. I like that we're saving money, and I think that that's a good thing, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Chief Teague?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate your comments, Counselor Herrera, but I don't think the public should lose sight of the fact that the purpose of Senate Bill 1049 is to get people to retire.
Yeah, well. Good point.
Well, and if they retire, they have more time for coaching. Hmm. Yeah, anyway. Unless you flunk retirement, in which case, well, that happens. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Now, the first one to take advantage of this, Sergeant Lade. And as I understand it, Mr. Wood and Mr. Johnson, because Mr. Wood does not have the authority, we actually have to go ahead and approve this for Sergeant Lade to be able to take advantage of this program, and is that also not true of anybody else who decides to do this between now and hiring the interim?
Yes, that would be correct. And if I may, Madam Mayor, because it's a little confusing, I'll explain it for the audience. The charter calls for a city...
The Charter calls for a city manager pro temp when the office is vacant. And it says the city manager pro temp has all the duties and powers of the regular city manager, except cannot hire or fire an employee without the consent. It's not really the approval. You've... It's with the consent. So the proposal comes from the city manager pro temp, but that has to be approved. Technically, although it's the same employee, this is a hire. The person is technically leaving and then being rehired. And so when I was asked about this a few weeks back, I said, boy, that is bad timing, because my understanding is that was kind of set to go under the previous city manager, as a permanent city manager. But I said, I think it has to go to council under the Charter. So that's the reason it's before you.
Well, we've had an opportunity to talk about a good program that we are going to be able to expand, so I think we've ended up with a win here. With that, Council President Smith, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Now I'm lost.
Now you're lost? So this is the second... Now we are going to under the policy that we have adopted by resolution to offer to...
We haven't adopted any... Madam Mayor, we haven't adopted any policy that I'm aware of.
We just passed the resolution to... For the policy to allow all Tier 1s and Tier 2s to retire and be rehired under the Senate Bill 1049.
Okay, all right. I thought the staff was bringing that back to us. That's what I thought. We were directing staff to bring back a resolution.
Nope. That was... I made the resolution to adopt that policy.
Okay.
Unless I made a mistake. But that was my intention, that we direct staff to have to permit all employees who wish to take advantage of this program to do so. So if that means that we have to... They have to come back with additional resolutions, I don't know what that looks like. But as far as a policy direction, that is what we just adopted. Do you want Ms. Davis to read the resolution, just for clarification? Okay. Mr. Johnson? So am I correct in that at this point, this is where we would approve the rehire for Sergeant Lade?
Correct.
Under this policy?
Correct.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt this resolution to allow us to offer this position to Sergeant Lade. And if any other employee wishes to do this before we hire an interim city manager, we will see the same resolution come back to us for that employee as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions before we proceed? Okay. So because this is the same... Now, we have to get into... Well, let's put a motion on the table, second it, and then we can fix the numbers? Is that what we need to do?
Madam Mayor, no, the number in the report here is correct.
In the letter is correct?
In the letter is correct, yes.
The 5116 includes the $2 incentive or does not?
That does include the $2 incentive. If you add a 2% cost of living increase on that effective July 1st, 2021,
Oh, the COLA.
It becomes 5216.
So this will be effective...
So this is effective immediately at the current rate of 5116, which does include the $2 per hour incentive July 1st, when the cost of living increase takes effect. It'll actually be... He's currently making 4916 plus $2. July 1st, he'll make 5016 plus $2.
So the chart we got was going to be as of July 1st?
That is correct.
So...
I apologize, my dates.
So this is based on what... This would be a fixed rate based on what he would earn on July 1st? And does it include a COLA? Or does this fixed rate for the rest for the duration?
This 5116 is the rate as of today. That is the correct amount to include in this offer letter. Towards the bottom of the offer letter on the first page, there's annual COLA increase approved by budget for the classification of sergeant. So at that point, when we hit July 1st, his new rate will be... Base rate will be 5016 plus $2 incentive. So that'd be 5216.
Okay, so the current rate is the 4916 plus the 2, takes it to the 51. On July 1st, it'll go up $1. It'll be the 5016, and then the pay will be 5216.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to my question before that. Do we need to do a reconsideration or just flat-out make the motion and go forward? I know what your recommendation was. I'm asking again.
Yeah, I know, and my answer is the same again. I think if you're looking at passing the same resolution, which I think you are, is that correct?
That's...
Then what the rule says is if you're considering the very same matter at the next meeting, if it's a meeting afterwards, it can be brought up. But if it's the very next regular meeting, it requires a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Counselor Duran?
And we just said no on that, right?
You said no previously?
We didn't have anybody who was willing to reconsider this for Sergeant Lade. So we're at an impasse without... Well, I'm going to go ahead and put it out there that I moved to reconsider this motion. I'm looking for a second.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Since you voted in the affirmative...
No.
When you voted on the prevailing side, pardon me, you can make the motion, but it can be seconded by anyone.
Correct. I'm making the motion for reconsideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reconsider the resolution before us. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say no?
No.
No.
No's hands up. No's Smith and Day. Motion passes 5-2. Now to the motion itself, to the resolution itself, for, yeah, R 2021 authorizing city manager pro temp to offer temporary employment to Sergeant David Lade. So I need a motion and a second.
I'm... Sorry, let me open this up. I move that we accept resolution... Sorry.
Adopt.
Adopt resolution. 2021 declaring a... Oops, that is the wrong one. Sorry.
Page 74.
It's page 73.
Okay.
74.
I got it, okay. I move that we approve resolution R 2021 authorizing city manager pro temp to offer temporary employment to Sergeant David Lade.
Looking for a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2021 authorizing city manager pro temp to offer temporary employment to Sergeant David Lade. Discussion.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions for staff.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. Chief Teague, last meeting, I asked you... So the justification for paying $190,000 for Sergeant Lade was that he's got this unique skill set. And I asked you a very direct question. How many times does he help... Does he work in the city of Kaiser with his special skill set? And I didn't get an answer. So I'd like to know, how many... What are we getting? What is... Are the citizens of Kaiser getting for $190,000 a year?
Yeah, so he applies... He uses that skill set in the city of Kaiser to develop accident reconstruction... I'm sorry, criminal accident reconstruction and significant crime reconstruction about six times a year as part of the Marion County Crash Team, which includes Oregon State Police. I'll tell you that he works outside of Kaiser more than six times a year doing that. When he works inside Kaiser doing that, the team comes. So we get the whole team that comes, the crash team, not just Kaiser, not just David Lade. So we get more than just David Lade on those six times that he comes, because he's part of the crash team that works throughout the county.
So if I understand what you just said, he works six times a year applying this unique skill in the city of Kaiser on average, more outside the city. So he's helping people outside the city more than he's helping people inside the city. But we're being asked to pay $190,000 a year so he can help people outside.
No, it's... Whoever fills that position is... We're going to pay that much money. He happens to have a skill set that makes him valuable to be doing that.
So as I was reading our budget document here, my question is for Mr. Wood. One of the things that we heard last time was that, in fact, he has a couple of job offers from private firms that he could go out and be employed by them as a private accident reconstructionist. As I was looking through our city budget manual, it says in here, parenthetically, I'll tell you that on this budget committee, Counselor Duran is not a member of the budget committee, but Counsel President Smith is on twice.
Oops.
Yeah. But it says in here on page 19 of the budget document that privatization and contracting with other entities will be evaluated as alternative to service delivery. So what I want to know is, has the city evaluated whether it would be less expensive to the citizens of Kaiser in this circumstance to have Sergeant Lade go work in a private company and for the six times that we need his skill set, hire him? Would that be less expensive than the $190,000 a year that we're going to commit to him over the next four years?
I guess the answer to your question, any top steps sergeant that we would have would be close to that dollar amount. So we're not really paying Sergeant Lade anything super special other than the $2 per hour.
Mr. Wood, that wasn't my question. My question is, have we determined if it would be less expensive to the city to hire him as a private contractor when he goes and works for one of these other entities for the six times a year that we need him? Would it be cheaper, less expensive for the taxpayers of Kaiser to do that than hire him on for $190,000 a year?
I would probably argue it would be more expensive to outsource that role, because we would be paying... We get a full-time employee out of this. The amount of time that he spends on the specialized... Specialized crash team reconstruction is not what he does 100% of his time.
But we're being asked to approve this because of his unique skill set. So based on your answer, you said probably. I'm assuming that means, based on your answer, I'm inferring from it
Mayor.
that you have not done that study to determine if privatization would be less expensive than having somebody on staff full-time?
This... The argument has changed. We aren't making the request based off of his special skill set. We are making this open to any employee of the city who is eligible to retire and is willing to retire early. So the answer to your question, I do believe it would still be more costly for the city, because we would still need a full-time sergeant to fill that spot, whether they do the construction, reconstruction, or whether we outsource that. So if we outsource it, we'll just be paying consultant fees on top of a full-time sergeant.
So...
So I'm going to go Chief Teague, one way in, and then I've got a comment, and I'll come back to you, Counselor Day, or another counselor who also has a question. Chief Teague?
Yeah, the question's really mine, not the finance director's. When we have, let's say, those six incidents here in Kaiser, we get a team response. We're not just buying Sergeant Lade that comes into Kaiser and works those. It's a full-team response. I see a full-team response. Three to five people that come in and do that. We don't actually own those crime scenes necessarily. Those are crime scenes in the district attorney's office. Because they're major crime scenes, they're going to weigh in on that, too. It would be quite out of character to hold a crime scene long enough, waiting for a private contractor to respond, to be working that crime scene when it's already... There's already a police team that does that kind of thing that exists, especially one exists in the county. I can't imagine the district attorney's office doing that. But regardless of that, the cost... If there's any cost at all to us for having Sergeant Lade be a member of that team, when we have those incidents in Kaiser and the whole team response, we're talking ones of thousands of dollars, not dozens of thousands of dollars or scores of thousands of dollars. It's close to being a wash, him responding out there versus them all coming here during those, say, six times.
And I do want to reiterate something that Mr. Wood said. We did adopt the policy first, that this is open to everybody. So that does take the specialization, the picking and choosing out of this. So this is... If Sergeant Lade wants to retire early and come back under the Senate Bill 1049, that is now something that is open to all, rather than just based on a special skill set or special seniority. We wanted to make sure it was equitable, open to all employees in all of our departments, because there was a financial benefit. I do understand your question, Counselor Day. You know, the cost benefit of having someone like Sergeant Lade available to us, and I think that's always a good question to ask. But we did take the position descriptions out of this particular policy implementation. I'm going to go to Counselor Kohler, and then I'm going to come back to you, Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I review this in my mind and on paper, what I see is we have Sergeant Lade, who works as a sergeant. He does all kinds of things. He also has a skill set where he works on the special team. This... His contract costs the city right now $190,000 per year. By allowing him to retire and hiring him back, we get all of the things that he's been doing, plus we get to save 6%. And to me, I look at that, and I think, if we have an opportunity to save 6% and still continue in the same vein that we are with the service level, then that's something that we should... Probably should be doing. And I think the proposal earlier was that we... The ordinance earlier that we looked at was to allow anybody that is in that Tier 1 or Tier 2 to retire and take advantage of the Senate bill, which allows us to save a bunch of money. And I think we're... Part of our responsibility is, yes, make sure that we spend all of our money the best we can. But the second is, when we have an opportunity to save money, we should be doing it.
Thank you, Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that in the resolution that is on the table, we have none of those specifics that are in the offer letter. And we are approving the resolution to present the offer... Sorry, attach offer letter to Sergeant Lade. But really, what we're doing is we're just affirming the policy in terms of... You know, normally, we don't see offer letters. Right now, what we're doing is we are setting the policy, as is our job as the City Council, to set the policy and approve this under the policy. But those... The details of the contracts are not necessarily our purview, I guess is what I'm saying. And so right now, the resolution as it is on the table is resolving to fulfill the policy that we just agreed on.
Thank you. One thing I might... And I'll go to you, Counselor Duran. This contract is also in compliance with the Kaiser Police Association Collective bargaining agreement. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Sergeant Ladey is not a represented employee.
He's not represented? Okay. So we have policies that address the equitable treatment of unrepresented employees, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Duran.
So what I had a problem with before was that this was extended beyond the six month that was normally allowed for a temporary employee. And that was the hang up that I had with equity. I just wanted to make sure that this was a special case. Is that gonna be something that's given to other people on, you know, as an option? And it I was just reading this, and it says that it it does say that it's a special case. And this offers an exception to policy requested by the chief of police and approved by the city manager for specific reasons identified by the chief of police for this particular situation and does not establish precedence applicable to future requests for temporary positions of others or or offers. So that that was my my hang up before, and I just want to make sure that that doesn't cause an issue in the future. Well, he got a special case because, I mean, I know it's because he's got special skills, but I just want to make sure that's not an issue.
So his recommendation, then, to amend the the offer letter to take out those provisions? Because you're talking about the offer letter itself, because that's not in the resolution.
Right, that's in the offer letter.
Okay. And I believe that's a point well taken, because that is no longer these those issues are no longer the case.
Actually, Madam Mayor, point of order, it is part of the resolution.
I I agree, but.
The letter is part of the resolution.
Yes, the letter is part of the resolution, which is why I believe that that's a point well taken, that those elements of the offer letter need to be deleted, because those are no longer the case in this offer. Mr. Johnson.
I apologize. I'm just skimming this real fast. I believe that was in the staff report. I can't find where it is in the in the letter.
It's on page 76 of the council packet, page two of the extended set. It's the, well, it's about halfway down on that letter.
There it is, yep. The paragraph beginning temporary positions typically.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Day. Yes, I missed that.
So yeah, that that paragraph needs to come out. This is not an exception to policy anymore, and this is not based on the skills, but it is specific this is open to all tier one, tier two. And then we're also making this available through the end of December 31, 2024. So we're not reviewing it in one year, but we're gonna make this available to all employees to be able to go to the sunset of this particular policy. Mr. Wood, and I'll go to Mr. Johnson.
I'll let Tim speak.
I would request to keep that timeline in. I think this is something that we need to continue to evaluate on an annual basis.
Okay.
At least if I were the city manager.
Well, that wasn't what we just that that's up to the employee at this point, is it not?
That is correct, but I think there needs to be a formal acknowledgement of that two times. Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said, and I'll go to you, Counselor Day.
I would like I intentionally left that part in. I think there needs to be an annual review of this process to make sure that it's working, make sure there is an on ramp, off ramp. So again, this is a special situation where we're we're I don't necessarily want to commit everyone for the entire time period necessarily, so.
Well, that's kind of what we just said, though.
Yep.
Because Senate Bill 1049 allows the employee to remain in this position as long as they wish to continue in that position till the sunset, and then it's over. And the sunset is December 31, 2024, isn't it? And now, if he wants to be done earlier, absolutely, shake hands, call it a day.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Uh, Counselor, sorry.
I'll go to Chief, I think he can explain it better.
All right, thank you.
As a department head, I have no I have no problem with leaving the 2024 language in there. But there is language in here that allows me to say, you're no longer fit our organizational needs, or you're no longer fulfilling your obligations as an employee. So it's still incumbent upon the employee to do his job. So I want to make sure that nobody thinks, just because we entered this arrangement, they have carte blanche right to employment and not do a darn thing until the day they retire, December 31, 2024. There's still a there's still a contractual agreement between employee and employer.
And would that be covered under annual evaluations?
Sure, you bet.
Because, I mean, every employee is gonna be go through an employee evaluation every year, and that includes people who do this as well.
Every day.
Well, that's true, too. But I think Michelle DePino would probably look to the the ongoing evaluations, and that needs to happen for people who retire and rehire under this program. They're still subject to the same employee evaluation, performance and so forth. And you're right, it's not a car you you get to work as long as you want, and there's no accountability. I don't think there was ever an intention of removing the accountability piece. Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a department head, I agree with John, and I want to I want to say that I would encourage an employee to retire per the Senate bill, but I would also want the ability to encourage that employee to move on to greener pastures if their performance was not up to standard. And if you just leave it to the personnel policies, the HR director is probably gonna take the position that this has been a stellar employee for 27 years, and he's now not good after a year and a half. You can't just get rid of him. You're handcuffing a department head if you lock it into the end of that Senate bill, in my opinion. Thank you.
So it could be available till, but it's not required, I mean, the employee still needs to be able to perform, as those be subject to the same personnel policies that the current employees are under. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct in my opinion. But but what I'm saying is, you have a stellar employee that's been with the organization for decades, and because of whatever, their performance drops off dramatically, you're not gonna be able to encourage them to leave. You're gonna be stuck with that employee until the end of the deadline of the Senate bill. So an annual re-up or reaffirm of the position or the offer, I think, is a good thing to have in place. It's only three years. It's not an extended period of time. Do I think that will occur? No, I don't. But my point is, if you lock it lock the offer into the term of the Senate bill, then you have no recourse as a manager, department head, for somebody that doesn't live up to the expectations that they need to live up to. That's what I'm trying to get at.
For this particular employee, we've got to do it for all of them.
Yes.
This is gonna be reviewed annually.
That's what we would advise, Madam Mayor. Yes.
Again, it's gotta be one or none. I mean, it's gotta be all or none. It can't be we can't piecemeal this. And I know we're trying we're creating this as on the fly, because it's not what we normally do. On the other hand, this is a an opportunity for cost savings that should be available to everybody. We've got to make sure we're protecting the interests of the city, both financially and in terms of treating all the employees equitably and under the same personnel policies, all of which all employees have to go through annual review. Am I correct?
Oh, yeah.
So all of them have to be annually reviewed. That's going to include the retire, rehire crowd. They're gonna have to also continue to be evaluated. We can't make an exception there, or we're not gonna be doing our due diligence, right?
Agreed.
Counselor Day, and then you've got one.
This is.
I frustrated the cookies out of you.
Yes, this is a complete mess. This is this is this is not good legislating. This is not good policymaking. It just isn't. We're trying to fit a round hole a round peg into a square hole. What we need to do is step back, have staff come back with a resolution or an ordinance or whatever that we can all discuss, maybe hold a public hearing, let the citizens of Kaiser have a have a voice in it. Because we're you guys are talking about different things. We just made we just passed a resolution, if I understand it right, that says this is good through 2024. Now, we're having a couple of department heads say, whoa, 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 wait a minute. We don't want them to think that they just that tells me that sums up all kinds of red flags. We need to step back.
Okay.
Whether it be with Sergeant Ladey or anyone else. We just got done being told this wasn't a special exception. Mr. Wood just said this is a special exception. I don't know if anyone else caught that. I did, okay? We are I don't know what the rush is, all right? I don't get it. But this is not how we do we should not be doing things this way, especially I love the $700,000 savings or whatever else that is, but we're also committing ostensibly the city to 800 that roughly, or $760,000 over the next four years to one employee, right? From my perspective, that seems to me to be the kind of thing that maybe we ought to involve the citizens in. If there's a there is a reason why the charter says, in circumstances that we find ourselves in now, the city council makes these decisions, maybe we ought to have the public input on this as well. But we are we have gone so far off the rails, we need to bring it all back, come back with something that's understandable, because I don't even know what the motion is right now. I don't even know if there's a motion on the table, I think there is, but who knows what it is? I mean, I know Tracy can Ms. Davis can read it back to us, but this has gotten way, way, way off the rails, and we need to we need to do this the right way, the responsible way. Let's have staff bring something back that we can all see and vote on.
Thank you. Counsel President Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would reiterate that what's making you nervous is it's not that I don't love our police department, it's not that I don't think, you know, Sergeant Ladey is amazing, it's that I just want to make sure we're doing this the right way. And as a manager in a corporation right now, I'm having a little bit of a panic attack because there's no representation from HR here right now. And that is I would not be making these kind of decisions without having an HR person in the room that understands the laws and the rules that go along with it. So I really would rather direct it back to the staff to clean this up, as he said. I just think that you I don't have it in front of me to read it thoroughly as we are doing it and what it's gonna be. And to me, the accuracy must be there on this. So that's just my point, is that I think we're missing a very important piece with not having HR here to to help us in this.
Chief T.
I gotta tell you, I think as an employer, you're doing a disservice to our employee. We've strung him along since February. I agree, we need to work on the language moving forward, but I also suggest we should make a decision with regard to Sergeant Ladey tonight. I think we should we all should make a resolution to offer him a job for one year. That's what he expects, one year. In the interim, you can work with HR and bring her back to describe what the rest of the employees look like. And you can specifically state that this is specific to Sergeant Ladey, not to fail to establish a precedence. That's the fairest thing to do to the employee.
Mr. Johnson.
I would echo what the chief said. Also, while Counsel President Smith is correct about maybe HR approving the general policy, the actual issue before us is the letter, which has been approved by HR. And there's, as everyone's staff has indicated, there's a good reason for that one year. So that's all I was gonna add, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Day.
Chief T, with all due respect, I I think you're out of line when you're telling me that I'm stringing along Sergeant Ladey. I'm not stringing anybody along, okay? I had nothing to do, we had nothing to do with any of it, until it was brought to us, because that's what the city charter requires. We started asking questions. I haven't made a single promise to Sergeant Ladey. I haven't told him this is I haven't had a conversation with him about it. So the idea that I or anyone else on this council is stringing him along, I'm not gonna accept that. That's not okay.
Counselor Day, I guarantee you, it was nothing personal, and I suggest you shouldn't get offended. I'm not I'm not suggesting that you, as a person, have done anything malicious at all.
I don't know that anyone on this council has.
I agree.
Okay, but I think it's I think it's inappropriate for you to tell us that we're stringing him along. Nobody's stringing anybody along. We're trying to figure this mess out.
So we have a motion and a second for the resolution as it stands, authorization of the city manager pro temp to offer temporary employment to Sergeant Ladey. We've heard that there we had we've had questions about the paragraph on the offer letter on page two. And if it remains one year, it is still an exception to policy, because the policy that we have put forward has to do with making this available to city employees up through the end of the sunset, although it was not meant to imply that they have carte blanche through the end of that. And that is something that personnel policies will have to come back with. But this is a it is separate. Okay, it does have that review. Do I have the motion correct, and then the that one caveat, although it is it looks like it does retain it does remain valid at this point? Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
Hands on noes. Motion passes for three. The noes are Duran, Day, and Smith. What I would ask is that city staff come back with anything that the council needs to look at in terms of policy, or correct any of the things we might not have gotten complete tonight regarding the implementation of Senate Bill 1049, and what would work for both the employees and the city as the employer for performance evaluation review and other issues surrounding offering that temporary employment post-retirement. Is that helpful? Or did I just muddy it up?
You muddied it up.
I muddied it up.
We can bring something back to bring some some clarity to how this has landed, so.
If needed. Any further anything further on that? Okay. It is 9:30. Let's take a five-minute bio break, and then we'll reconvene to wrap up our agenda. We are in recess.
...in regular meetings and work sessions.
Well, we'll talk about E in a minute because there's a reason for the 24th. It has to go with our council rules.
Right.
To do it for good reason, and I think also for the 19th. But anyway, so any questions on the staff report for item D, which is the ordinance regarding the state of emergency, Councilor Day?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like staff on both 78, Council PAC 78, and I think the 86 is the other one, identifies Christopher C. Epley as the city manager.
Yes, thank you.
He is no longer the city manager, and I don't, and this is in the public record. I don't want people reading this thinking, what's going on? He's been gone.
Right, I was gonna, thank you, Councilor Day. I was gonna mention that under other business, our apologies. We had a template issue, if you know what I mean, with the, with some of the agenda items, so that got left in there, and that's incorrect. My apologies.
All right. Thank you, good catch. Any other questions on the emergence, the declaration of a state of emergency? Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance declaring a sixth local state of emergency in the city of Kaiser as a result of COVID-19 pandemic declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's been moved down seconded as the Kaiser City Council adopted a bill for an ordinance declaring a sixth local state of emergency in the city of Kaiser as a result of COVID-19 pandemic declaring an emergency. Further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. So we need now, on meeting virtually or in person, as long as the, the emergency declaration is in place, we have the option to meet virtually if we so choose. At this point, we have chosen to meet in person. Do we need to pass a motion on that to continue that or to address it if conditions change?
Right, if you continue, the, the current direction of council is to meet in person unless specifically deciding to meet virtually. So if, if there's no need to meet virtually, other than these two other items on the next agenda item, then no motion is necessary.
Is there anyone who wants to put a motion on the table to go back to meeting virtually? I think we're good. I don't know about you, but I Zoom way too much. All right, item E approving in May 19, 2021, and May 24, 2021, as virtual work sessions. City Manager Pro Tem?
City Attorney Shannon Johnson?
Thank you, Tim, Madam Mayor and Council. As I indicated, this is before the council for a minute motion on May 19 and May 24, the work sessions, the first one being a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and the second one being a work session to update the council on the homeless alliance. Both of those have a number of participants that makes it difficult to hold those work sessions in person due to physical constraints in terms of spacing, and so the recommendation is to hold those virtually. So the recommendation is to make a minute motion to indicate that you wish to meet virtually for those, unless you decide you don't want to. We would, we would have difficulty doing it in this room, though, if you wanted to do it in person.
Thank you very much. I do have one clarification on the staff report, and the reason for the May 24th is that the presenter is out of state.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, he is in there.
Zooming that person in, that's former Commissioner Janet Carlson. She's a lead contractor with the Miblama Valley Homeless Alliance, so make sure you tune in. We'll be talking about the work of the homeless alliance, and because of the deep interest of the community in hearing this, in order to be able to broadcast it, we either have to be Zoom or we have to be in person, and it's really hard to mix and match with our current technology. I understand that we'll be able to make improvements, but in order to accommodate our out-of-area speaker, Janet Carlson, I have asked that this be a virtual meeting so we can broadcast. Any other questions or comments on the, on the staff report? Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we make a minute motion to meet virtually for the work sessions on May 19, 2021, and May 24, 2021.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council approved meeting virtually for the work sessions on May 19, 2021, and May 24, 2021. Discussion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8F, City Manager Pro Tem?
Madam Mayor, City Council. The City Council rules of procedure, Section 21, outlines various training opportunities for the mayor and the city council members. If a training opportunity arises outside of those listed and the total costs exceed $100, council approval is required prior to the registration. Mayor Kathy Clark and Councilor Laura Reed have requested approval for registration to attend the Strategic Government Resources Elected Officials Conference Common Ground on June 23 and June 24, 2021. The conference is being held virtually and registration cost is 150 per person. These are included in the current appropriations for the 2021 City Council expense line item. It's recommended the City Council discuss the matter and make a motion to approve registration costs for Mayor Kathy Clark and Councilor Laura Reed in the amount of $300 to attend the conference. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions on the staff report? Councilor Reed?
Do I abstain from this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So this is a conference, I did a Strategic Government Resources Conference about a couple months ago on strategic leadership, and I found that information to be extremely helpful and encouraging and, excuse me, unchallenging. So when I saw this opportunity, I wanted to do this, and this in particular has to do with common ground, you know, outreach to learn from people from other jurisdictions on being able to build collaboration, participation, and so forth among, you know, different communities, different racial, ethnic, socioeconomic collaboration, and learn from people who have done this work, learn from their experience. That's why I'm asking for this one. All right, Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Kaiser City Council approve registration costs for Mayor Kathy Clark and Councilor Laura Reed in the amount of $300 to attend the Strategic Government Resources Elected Officials Conference Common Ground on June 23 and June 24, 2021.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council approve registration costs for Mayor Kathy Clark and Councilor Laura Reed in the amount of $300 to attend the Strategic Government Resources Elected Officials Conference Common Ground on June 23 and 24, 2021. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. What's nice is that both of them are in the evening, so they don't take time off of work. All right, that concludes the administrative action consent calendar. Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are three items on the consent calendar. Item A, Kaiser Police Community Service Unit and Community Response Unit Petty Cash Report. Item B is approval of the April 12, 2021 work session minutes. Item C is approval of April 19, 2021 regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Councilor Kohler?
I have a question.
On which one?
On the minutes.
Which one?
Which one?
Work session or regular session?
City Council meeting.
The 20th on the 19th?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll pull that one. Any other polls? Council President Smith?
I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar items A and B.
Second?
Consent calendar items A and B have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. I like the pictures in the work session minutes from the Parks Tour. That was awesome. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, we had a vote on the Volunteer of the Quarter. Was it this meeting or was it the meeting before that we did that? But we were going to award that next council meeting? When, when did we do that?
Oh, for the, yeah, we did. That was for the, the Ward 1 volunteers who served meals.
This is for the, the group that put the over 40
Yeah.
loads of, of wood out.
Oh, that one, okay.
So I, I just, I don't see it on here, but I don't remember exactly when we did that.
Or, was that from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and did that recommendation get forwarded?
Yes, it did, and then we, we talked about it.
We have a, we have a Volunteer of the Quarter Award coming up on the next agenda.
It is, but isn't that what we were going to?
That, that one's for Jessica Davidson in the church.
Right, but
Am I missing one?
Was this the meeting that we approved at, or was it the meeting before? That's what I, I wasn't sure.
So I, normally the council doesn't approve a Volunteer of the Quarter at the council.
No.
So I'm wondering if that occurred at the Volunteer Coordinating Committee meeting.
But it did appear, it did at the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, but don't we approve that?
No, it comes, it, the recommendation comes to us, and then we actually present the award.
Okay, that was my question.
And that award we present at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, I have a lot of questions, but nothing.
The meaning of life, all right, in 10 words or less.
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, anything else on the minutes from the April 19, 2021 regular session? Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the minutes for the April 19, 2021 session.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council approve the minutes from the April 19, 2021 regular session minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council, and not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Madam Mayor, I believe Council President Smith may have a motion regarding the release of a report dealing with the city manager's discharge of a firearm. Due to any potential liability the city may have, any remarks that may be made by the council could cause some difficulty. I would strongly advise that the motion not be discussed, but simply voted on.
All right.
And I believe Council President Smith may have a motion to that effect.
Council President Smith?
First, I move we suspend the rules to discuss release of the private investigator's report regarding the firearm discharge by the former city manager.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council suspend the rules to take up the matter of releasing the investigation report regarding the accidental discharge of firearm by the former city manager. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to release the private investigator's report regarding the former city manager's discharge of a firearm in City Hall in its entirety, along with a press release answering some of the questions arising in connection with that incident.
Second?
Can I have that? Thank you. Got it. It's been moved and seconded, that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to release the private investigator's report regarding the former city manager's discharge of a firearm in City Hall in its entirety, along with the press release answering some of the common questions arising in connection with the incident. On advice of council, I will not ask for discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the audience and council, we will do our best to do that very quickly. I don't know if it'll be by tomorrow, because we are trying to look at what would be an appropriate FAQ and finalizing that. There may be minor redactions with regard to birth dates or social security numbers or something that we're double checking, but other than that, it will be totally unredacted.
All right, thank you very much for the clarification. All right, is there any other, other business to be brought to City Council at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Day, Councilor Day?
I hope I haven't been kicked off.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I did not mean to demote you.
I, I have a question, it might be a promotion, actually. I have a question for Chief Teague. I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
We're gonna do the staff updates, and that, that might be a good time for that? Would that be?
It might, this relates to the COVID circumstances. I've had a couple of, of people, I'm just gonna ask a question. The issue is spectators at McNary High School or other schools showing up, apparently they're not allowed, I don't, I don't know what the rules are exactly. They wanted to know if the, if the, if the city or if the school district tells them, you know, get off, they don't, the school district calls Kaiser Police Department, what is the Kaiser Police Department going to do in that circumstance? I told a couple people that I'd ask that question, so I've done that.
You mean, so if the school district tells them that to leave the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the school district wants to trespass them, then we will help the school district trespass them.
Okay, that's what I thought you would say, but I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and just to clarify, is, is the school district's property, so they choose the circumstance I wish to, to do the trespass, and then you are responding to that specifically? Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other business before we go to staff updates? All right, City Manager Pro Tem, staff updates, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Ms. Davis?
I have nothing, thank you.
Chief Teague? You know, this is not something to be celebrated, per se. We've got a guy that just got sentenced to five years, 60 months in DOC. If there's an angle to celebrate on it, it's that he has over 125 cycles in the past few years, another 25 dating back to when he was a child. Theft, trespass, forgery, possession of methamphetamine, ID theft, and those are all just in recent months. It's a significant problem up at Kaiser Station and for some of the local businesses, even here, right here in downtown corridor. And it was just a real tribute to a crew for paying significant attention to each of these little bitty incidents, isolated incidents, and working with the DA's office to aggravate them to get this guy into DOC. We've arrested him, or cited him for that matter, four times in recent months for possession of methamphetamine. The guy is, he is crazed out on methamphetamine, and he is not getting help out here on the streets. So I'm hoping we'll see a much better citizen on the other side of his time in DOC, and certainly our businesses are better off.
Sounds like a, a win-win, even though it's going a very hard direction. Thank you for sharing that, sir.
Mr. Witham?
Just a couple of things. I just got an email today that the Transportation Growth Management Grant cycle just dropped the packets for the Transportation System Plan Update Grant that we may be applying for, so I will be kind of digging through that, and if that's something that we determine to pursue in this grant funding cycle, we'll be coming back to you for authorization to apply for that grant. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is our, our legal assistant, Tammy Harms is super diligent in keeping me on track with, with things that I'm supposed to do. And one of the things we've come back to you all over the last, I believe this was year three or four, where we talk about rent burden in, in our community, and specifically, we've been in this category where we've been considered severely rent burdened, which is where we are over this 25% threshold, which is the magic number. And so we've actually been waiting for the Oregon Housing Services folks to kind of indicate where we were at this year, and I'm happy to report, somehow, we just got just under that threshold in this most recent set of data. And now it's, it's nothing to write home about, I think we're at 24.7%, but it did at least move in a direction as opposed to moving up, which is what it had been doing the last couple of years. So I did want to kind of let you, you know that. I think in no way does that minimize the, the goals that council's established to look at, you know, housing costs in the area and housing affordability by any means, but I felt like it was, it was worthy to note that at least there was a little bit of, of something that's like, okay, that's, that's a little bit positive. So, and other, other than that, I have nothing else tonight.
That's, that's significant. I do have, oh, I guess we'll finish up, and then I've got a follow-up question.
Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you, Jim, Madam Mayor and Council. Couple things. First of all, good news, the Claggett Creek play structure is open for use. I was there this afternoon helping coach a T-ball game, and there were lots of kids, a lot of them T-ballers to begin with, playing on the playground, so it's open for use. I also want to let the council know that we had a bid opening recently for 88 ramp upgrades in conjunction with our annual resurfacing program. We elected to throw all the bids out. They were higher than anticipated. We had a total of three bids come in, one was deemed non, oh, non-responsive. The other two bids were higher than the estimate, one was really high compared to the estimate. So we talked about options. I think what we're gonna do is just kind of bunch it for right now and put it back out in October. We got out late this year with our bids because I wasn't sure we were gonna have funding to do the work we were trying to get done. Street fund, gas tax was down. By the time we felt comfortable moving ahead and got everything ready to go, bids got out later than normal. I think what happened is contractors were all busy, so they weren't interested in bidding the work for the ramps, expecting that, to see the same thing in the paving. If we do get bids, we think they're gonna be quite high, and so we're just gonna step back, evaluate what we need to do this summer to keep some roads in place, and bid it at a later date and hopefully get better prices. So just wanted to let you all know that.
So construction season will start a little later?
Yeah. In fact, paving, resurfacing of streets in Kaiser probably won't happen this summer. It'll be the following spring, summer, before we get any done. We'll put together a bigger package and do more streets.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I'd just like to add that we're continuing to partner with the Marion County Health Department, and we're gonna have another vaccine clinic here on site on Thursday, and we'll have some information on our website as far as signing up if, if folks are interested. And I'd also like to update that the city manager recruitment for the interim city manager is live out there, has a closed date of May 17, and that's not too soon in my opinion. Is there anything else that city councillors would like to ask of city staff?
Councilor Day?
I just have a question about the Budget Committee meetings. I, I know the Budget Committee members, including Council President Smith, who gets to attend twice, but Counselor Duran doesn't. But I was just wondering, what staff are there? Or are there staff there?
All of the department heads will be there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Virtually. All right, thank you. I do have one follow-up, and I want to thank Mr. Witham for giving me a heads up that when he told me that when the population forecast numbers were gonna come out of the Population Research Center from Portland State University, I quote, "wasn't gonna like them," he would, that was an understatement. I don't. And the SCATS Policy Committee, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, also has some significant questions about how those numbers were derived. So I did sign a letter as the Chair of SCATS regarding the methodologies used and the, what I believe are erroneously low numbers that they're forecasting for the population of Kaiser and the Salem-Kaiser area. It will hamper our ability to plan for housing, for transportation infrastructure, and by underestimating, we would have less coming, that we would be allowed to plan for, and considering that, we just barely eked under the severely rent burdened, that would push us right back over the top if we relent in any way, shape, or form on building more housing of any type and providing the infrastructure to go with it. So thank you for that heads up. Are we going to draft a letter from the city of Kaiser to join with SCATS, and the city of Salem has also drafted one that, Marion County?
Yeah, so I know, I believe, so we're, we're kind of joined up with, we had a meeting, Polk, Marion, Salem, Council of Governments Representation, which is what, in that meeting and talking about the best approach for the cities, we looked at, we looked to SCATS as being kind of an authoritative policy-driving committee that would have some weight. I don't know that I'm happy to report, but I have, I got an email on Friday. So the Population Research Center out of Portland State and their kind of head Population Projection PhD gal, she sent out an email to all of us requesting a meeting. So I haven't, I don't know when that meeting is yet, I had to fill out a doodle poll, so I said, whenever you do it, I'll make sure I'm there. But, so I don't, I don't know that it's necessary for Kaiser to specifically send a letter. The biggest reason being, we don't really have data at the level that like Salem does right now because of their, our Salem project and what they've been going through. So I think, I don't know how much utility it would give us as a city, but I think it's definitely important that we're part of that group of folks as the region. I think that carries more weight, because that's really how the population is allocated to the region anyway. So if that answers your question.
It pretty much does, and thanks for keeping us at the table. I tell people, you're either at the table or you're on the menu. And this is one where I am deeply concerned that any attempt to scale back the population that we need to plan for is only going to exacerbate the economic disparity that we have in this area, push more and more people farther away, and then tell them, oh, by the way, we're not gonna provide roads for you to drive to get to employment. That's nuts, and that's a highly technical term. So anyway, keep me in the loop on this. I was happy to sign this on behalf of SCATS and be happy to be part of that conversation on the policy side, but I wanted, council, I want you to know that this conversation was happening and how very, very important it is. It's the population number, but that's the number that's gonna drive a lot of our planning that we've already done to make sure that we are being able to provide for more housing, more types, right here in Kaiser, rather than push people out going, well, you know, we're gonna be the high-rent district, and maybe you can drive in and pour my latte once in a while. I don't think so. That's not how Kaiser rolls, so thank you for that. Yeah, I'm still a little hot on that one. Anybody else on the staff updates? Okay, council member reports, and Counselor Duran, can I start with you tonight?
I have nothing.
All right. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple things. First of all, our McNary Principal, Eric Jesperson, has been honored with the Oregon Principal of the Year Award, and very deserved. He is an excellent principal, and he, his leadership has been innovative and has, has identified problems and solved them wonderfully. And he, he, he's an excellent leader and gathers his forces well. So with that, and in addition to the, the national recognition, state and national recognition that our superintendent has, has earned is pretty impressive. We have some really excellent people working in our behalf. And another thing that, that shows this is, we have been given the opportunity at McNary in conjunction with the Willamette Education Service District to enter into a two-year cohort with the Center for Equity and Inclusion. And this is, we, we just had an information meeting this last week, and it was, the response from the McNary staff was overwhelming. We have several applicants who are, are willing to go through this very rigorous program. It's a year-long program, and then a year commitment to do training of other staff, and it is a pilot pro, the Center for Equity and Inclusion has been And it is a pilot, the Center for Equity and Inclusion has been around training various organizations for quite some time, but this is the first, it's a pilot of the relationship between the education service districts and a school. And McNary has been selected because of the leadership that we have shown in innovations. And so I'm really excited about this prospect, and I think it will be excellent for McNary, excellent for our community in implementing the equity and inclusion work that we have committed to.
Congratulations, world-class once again.
Thank you.
Council President Smith?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Herrera?
I also want to echo the congrats to a good friend, Eric Jesperson. And he has been dedicated to helping our, you know, all the students and as well as the community. And as far as equity inclusion, he's right there. Along with that, I want to mention that next week, we have our, LAC has their Scholarship Drive-Thru Program, which will be awarding $400 scholarships to 20 students who, and every time I get an opportunity, I like to brag about Latino students at McNary, which has the highest graduation rate in the whole state. And you know that, of course.
I do.
But that is a great effort, and our scholarships are meant, they're like an investment in our community because we preach to come back and help others and be part of our community. And that's kind of a sticking point. We want to make sure that folks follow up on that. And I think that we have been very successful with some of our students have been, they're actually mentoring other students now. Also, I want to thank them for the tour. That was a great tour. It was all on it. Because everybody was on.
I go on a tour every day, just saying.
Yeah. It was really, it was very, very, it was incredible. The stuff they've done at McNary, it is world-class. I mean, not only the students, the teachers, everything, even the building, okay? And also had an Equity Inclusion, League of Oregon Cities Equity Inclusion Committee, and I've seen some great progress there. League of Oregon Cities is really working hard on that. They're doing a great job. That was, the LAC thing is next Thursday and the 13th, and then we'll be doing the drive-thru thing over there. It's not a, it's our fourth annual. It's not, like I said, the big event, but we want to make sure that we get those scholarships to the kids that deserve it. And they all have written some great testaments of what they want to do and what they're going to do and how they're going to help us in our community.
Are we invited?
Also, pardon?
Are we invited?
Everybody's invited, but it's a drive-thru thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's at 6 o'clock, but, you know, like I said, and Tim, just to remind you, I will be getting some of the tables and whatnot. We talked about that. Everybody's welcome.
It's the same as budget meeting, though, right?
I'm sorry?
It's the same time as budget meeting?
13th.
Yeah, 13th.
LAC scholarship is the 13th.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we try to make sure there, although, as you know, I'm going to be gone on the 6th, so we'll be missing that. I think I wrote to everybody that. Single mile's coming up, so everybody be safe. That's a lot of fun. Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, I attended that virtually. I got, with my stimulus money, I bought a little computer, and I had my friend install Kaiser, so now I'm online. So, okay, and also, you know, I want to kudos to Rocky, I don't know if you know Rocky Barles with the Ford Foundation from Roseburg? He's helped in a lot of projects, and I've worked with him. He's leaving after the month of May, going back to San Diego, and he's been so much help to a lot of our Latino projects and conferences and whatnot. Last but not least, follow McNary. You know, now that they're playing baseball and softball, it's really nice to go out and support our kids. It's open air, and, believe me, they notice when we're out there, so it's a great thing. And last but not least, I want to thank Councilor Duran for the shirt. And I don't think it's a do-exo. And thanks for all the folks that showed up. I want to thank everybody, and my message to the folks that show up, don't worry, always, this is always welcome to everybody, whether we agree with your opinions or not. Nobody will interrupt anybody. We think that you have a right to be able to speak as a community member, so I thank you folks for showing up and doing that. And that's all I have. My time's up.
Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only had three items, and Councilor Herrera already talked about one. So the first is that special thank you to Kevin Clark and his crew who came to the work session to help prep for the FEMA ICS 100 and 700 courses. I very much appreciate it. Thank you. Number two, Kaiser Community Dinner was held this last Wednesday. They've heard of our 400 meals, and thank you to McNary. So there's my three things for this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, you've already passed both courses, haven't you?
I have.
Congratulations. Yeah.
I did the 100 course Tuesday morning after the presentation, and then later that same day, I did the 700 course.
What was your score?
Pass.
It's a pass, yeah.
It was a football score. It was a football score. It was pass.
It was pass. So, yeah, just wanted to remind everybody, get their, theirs done as well. Make Mr. Lawyer's life much better, so. Yep, get it all done. All right, and Councilor Day?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I want to echo the congratulations to Eric Jesperson, well-deserved honor. And again, thank you to him and others from Salem-Kaiser School District on the outstanding tour on Friday. That was great. Want to thank Kevin Clark and Jim Tret and Bill Klein for being here last week and walking us through all the ICS stuff. The last thing is, even though I'm wearing an Oregon State, this is a personal privilege, I'm wearing an Oregon State mask, I'm also wearing a Lynnfield University sweatshirt tonight to commemorate my son tonight signed his letter of intent to play football next year at Lynnfield University. So we're very excited. Even though he didn't go to a local high school, he was born and raised here in Kaiser, so he's a Kaiser kid and went to Blanchett, but we're very excited for him. And I have nothing else.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. I only have one more thing to add. I already talked about the Population Research Center information, and I also want to thank Chief Clark, Mayor Tret, and the Schmeckel Fire Protection Program Chair, Bill Klein. We got a fearsome threesome that helped us get through Incident Command System ICS training, and we also got to do it with the Detroit City Council. So we got a two-for there also, where they also needed the training, and so we opened up and said, come on down and participate in the training at the same time. So that was a great opportunity for us to collaborate with the Detroit City Council. And what's something we told the folks last September, as all hell was breaking loose literally, is that we understand that it's easy, it's a challenge to show up in the immediate emergency. It's another thing when you show up for the long haul. And we told our friends and our neighbors in the canyon, we are going to show up for the long haul. This is another way we got to do that. So thank you to everybody who's been volunteering, helping with our neighbors in the canyon that Kaiser shows up not just for the short term, but for the long haul. Way to go. Just one more thing to mention, and this goes to the conversation we end up having earlier about the Middle Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. Tomorrow is the meeting of the Executive Committee. That's May 4th, Star Wars Day. May the 4th be with you. And I get to do that. And then on May 13th, the full board will meet in our regular session, talking not only about the grants that have been received, but also ongoing work for continuing to expand trauma-informed, evidence-based facilities, outreach, and so forth for people in our community who are homeless and housing insecure, and the complexities that each individual brings to that challenge. And I want people to know, mark your calendars for the grand opening for the Union Gospel Mission, the men's mission downtown. It will open mid-June, and then the official grand opening will be in mid-July. And that's been a fabulous collaboration between the Union Gospel Mission and so many of our service providers in this area. And I just want to thank everybody who's been involved with that. That's going to be another tremendous add to providing dignity, respect, and effective treatment and support and life change for the men who are served there. And the men and women on the main floor, they will have 24/7 access to facilities that people, men and women will be able to use. That is all I've got. Oh. Opening night. Baseball is back, folks, yeah. So at Volcano Stadium the second weekend of this month, I will be singing the National Anthem to open the first game of the Campesinos and the Senators on May 14th. So baseball is going to be played out at Volcano Stadium. They've been playing baseball, they've been doing the tournaments and so forth, but this is the opening of the Mavericks League. So encourage people to enjoy the local outdoor venue that we have for professional baseball. Agenda input, May 4th, Star Wars Day, May 6th and May 10th, if necessary. It won't be necessary, will it? We will have our budget meetings. They will all begin 6 o'clock. They will all be virtual. They will, we will meet on May 17th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. in regular session. We have a joint work session on May 19th. I know that's not a Monday, it's a Wednesday. At 6:00 p.m., we will be meeting with the Planning Commission as discussed earlier. May 24th, work session, again, that's going to be virtual, and that's going to be on the Middle Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. And I believe we're also going to have a presentation from PGE on their resiliency planning, so we're going to be adding that to that work session. We thought we would get a two-for out of it because their presenter also has requested virtual. And then on June 7th, we will meet back here again, 7:00 p.m. in regular session. Is there anything else for agenda input? Council, Councilor Herrera?
The Spring Symposium is Friday, so I think you and I and?
That's correct.
Council President?
Yes.
So that'll be all day long, I guess.
Part of it, yeah. Oh, it is. There we go. Yes, that's the League of Oregon Cities, the Spring Symposium on Resiliency. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Thank you all. It is 10:22, and we are adjourned.